Welcome to the Monday, August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Just a reminder that all votes while participating remotely must be made by roll call vote. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is the republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start with correspondence, so we'll turn it over to Nicole.
Hello, all right, um, the school committee received the following correspondence. A series of emailed letters regarding face masks for the upcoming two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two school year from the following people. On August ninth, Tom and Rose Adams. On August twelfth, Julie Albano. On August fourteenth, Ilania Basell. On August thirteenth, Sarah and Daniel Bishop. On August thirteenth, Cameron Burke. On August twelfth, Sherry and Joe Cartoon. On August thirteenth, Matt and Bethany Cowles. On August seventeenth, Ashley Deutsch. On August thirteenth, Mike DeNervin. On August tenth, Rachel Eaton. On August thirteenth, Lauren Fortune. On August eleventh, Heather Goldstein. On August thirteenth and fifteenth, Danielle Goodman. On August sixteenth, Candace Guerin. On August twelfth, Margaret Capelida. On August twelfth, Julia Kindle. On August seventh, Jen LaChappelle. On August seventeenth, Heather Laporte. On August thirteenth, Ariel Lautersmith. On August ninth, Josh Levin. On August fifteenth, Sarah McDonald. On August sixteenth, Joseph Mersko. On August fifteenth, Kristin Newmark. On August ninth and eighteenth, Deb Novotny. On August sixteenth and seventeenth, Chris Orzalak. On August sixteenth and seventeenth, Gina Pantusco. On August thirteenth, Mike Prisborsky. On August ninth, Mike and Rebecca Prisborsky. On August thirteenth, Rebecca Prisborsky. On August fourteenth, Amy Ruiz. On August fourteenth, Chris Ruiz. On August tenth, Kristen Sealy. On August eleventh, Megan Shahee. On August eleventh, Elizabeth Tharian. On August eleventh, Todd Tharian. On August twelfth, Ann Wheeler. And on August sixteenth, John Songless.
Thank you, Nicole. Our next item is approval of minutes, and we have a possible motion.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the August tenth, two thousand and twenty-one school committee meeting as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will move to a vote.
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Next up, we have visitor comments. And as a reminder, with visitor comments, we ask that you state your name, your address, and that you have a three-minute time limit. So if we have any visitors who would like to comment, uh, please make yourself known by raising your hand or using the raise hand function in Zoom. And it looks to me like everybody here has been invited.
Um, it seems that there's a problem with the link for community participants.
I received a similar information from a community member.
Interesting.
The link was an old one that was on the agenda. It was on the publicized agenda. That's what I've been told.
So that's clearly a problem.
For the town clerk though.
Say again, Diane?
It worked for the town clerk when she published the, because she joins our meeting. So I don't know how it would be an old one.
Do we have any way to send out the link that all of us used so that folks could actually jump on that link?
We have to put our heads together on this, maybe our collective wisdom on this.
I can put it on the front page of our website right now.
We.
You want me to do that?
I think we could do that. We, we may have to be more proactive. We certainly need to allow for public comment.
And we like that.
Do we know what, what meeting that was for?
It seems like August tenth, right?
I don't know, I just, but it's not the one that.
Let's see if I can start that meeting.
So Diane, my guess is you're not going to be able to start two meetings at the same time. Seems like we're trying. I, my only concern is that, um, if Diane is the host.
Marty is also the host. So I'm a host and Marty is a host. I can turn the host over to you, Kevin. Let me do that now.
Yeah, because Diane, if you could do that and then you drop out, try that other one, and then you could direct everybody back here, that would work.
Before we do this, so to clarify, the publicly posted meeting link is not the one that we're on. So rather than trying to get the public into our meeting, it would seem to me that we ought to go to the public, okay? I just wanted to make sure that that was.
All right, well, let me go and see if I can start that meeting. And then I'll, I'll text you to say, here's the link and.
Okay, so I think everybody.
I'll email all of you that, the new link.
I think everybody here needs to just hang out while Diane figures out if we can make this happen. Is that?
Let me, let me leave the meeting first.
And I think for everybody to understand that this is still part of a, a public meeting that we're in right now and that we are being recorded by LCTV.
Thank you for the reminder, Marty. Um, Brian, does this pose any problems for you if we jump to a different Zoom link?
Uh, for, yeah, uh, briefly, I mean, if we're, if we're leaving out of this, I think me and Tracy will just have to follow you, like. Yeah. So I'll need the link too, or an invite or whatever.
Sure.
And Tracy to Diane will need the same thing.
Sounds good.
The link at the top of the public agenda that's on the town website is the August tenth link.
But could be different than the one that I'm learning on.
That's correct. Right. Okay, the only problem with putting it in the chat is we're already in the Zoom. So if we click on that Zoom, we won't, we'll have, well.
You don't think copy it.
Right, you have to copy it into your browser and then, yeah, and leave this meeting.
I appreciate the patience of our, our guests. Yeah, the joy of Zoom, we all love it.
Our two doctors, uh, Dr. Bielski and Finn.
We will get through it.
So to our guests, uh, Finn, Dr. Ginsberg, Dr. Tapper, Dr. Bielski, I will email you very shortly the link to the publicly posted meeting. We'll get out of this meeting and you'll join via that Zoom link.
I just put it in the chat if you want to copy it, and then you can try and paste it in, so. All right, so is everybody good with the plan?
Ryan, that's okay with you? Okay?
Yeah, I'm gonna, uh, Diane, I don't know if she's still here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go over to that other link now.
Sue?
What about guests who are trying to get in after we get off this Zoom link? I don't know if anybody else would have this Zoom link, nobody but us, right?
No one would have this Zoom link.
Okay, thank you.
Correct, yes, all of our, yeah.
It happened because I could swear that I put the right link in, but.
Right, right.
Anyway, um, now we are going to have to start all over again, um, and then let all of the.
Welcome to the Monday, August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Just a reminder that all votes while participating remotely must be made by roll call vote. And again, thank you for everyone's patience as we cleared up those technical difficulties. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. We will start with correspondence, so I'll turn it over to Nicole.
Thank you, all right. The school committee received a series of emailed letters regarding face masks for the upcoming two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two school year from the following people. On August ninth, Tom and Rose Adams. On August twelfth, Julie Albano. On August fourteenth, Ilania Basell. On August thirteenth, Sarah and Daniel Bishop. On August thirteenth, Cameron Burke. On August twelfth, Sherry and Joe Cartoon. On August thirteenth, Matt and Bethany Cowles. On August seventeenth, Ashley Deutsch. On August thirteenth, Mike DeNervin. On August tenth, Rachel Eaton. On August thirteenth, Lauren Fortune. On August eleventh, Heather Goldstein. On August thirteenth and August fifteenth, Danielle Goodman. On August sixteenth, Candace Guerin. On August twelfth, Margaret Capelida. On August twelfth, Julia Kindle. On August seventh, Jen LaChappelle. On August seventeenth, Heather Laporte. On August thirteenth, Ariel Lautersmith. On August ninth, Josh Levine. On August fifteenth, Sarah McDonald. On August sixteenth, Joseph Mersko. On August fifteenth, Kristin Newmark. On August ninth and August eighteenth, Deb Novotny. On August sixteenth and August seventeenth, Chris Orzalak. On August sixteenth and August seventeenth, Gina Pantusco. On August thirteenth, Mike Prisborsky. On August ninth, Mike and Rebecca Prisborsky. On August thirteenth, Rebecca Prisborsky. On August fourteenth, Amy Ruiz. On August fourteenth, Chris Ruiz. On August tenth, Kristen Sealy. On August eleventh, Megan Shahee. On August eleventh, Elizabeth Tharian. On August eleventh, Todd Tharian. On August twelfth, Ann Wheeler. And on August sixteenth, John Songless.
Thank you, Nicole. Next up, we have approval of minutes, and there is a possible motion.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the August tenth, two thousand and twenty-one school committee meeting as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Susie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Bronwyn? Bronwyn, unmute.
Yes.
And yes for me. Next up, we have visitor comments. And just as a reminder, um, please state your name, your address, and try to keep your remarks to three minutes. Um, and just to make it easier for me to manage this, if you would like to make a comment, uh, please raise your hand, you can turn your camera on and hold your hand up, or you can use the raise hand function in Zoom, whichever you would like, and I will call on folks. And we will proceed through visitor comments, so who would like to start? I see, it says Paula Welch.
Right, it's the smarter half of the Welch family. I'll go ahead and correct that, um, it's Bill Welch, uh, twenty-five Meadow Brook Road. Uh, thank you for allowing me to give you just a minute or two of my time. Uh, my comment relates to what I understand to be a proposed recommendation by the school department to prohibit the rental of the school facilities as a result of the Delta variant. Uh, my comments are not to oppose that, but rather, I just want to be sure that if that recommendation comes before the school committee and that you ultimately vote on it, I just want to be sure that the wording of it is sufficiently narrowly tailored to what the actual recommendation is. And to that point, my understanding is it relates to the indoor facilities for, um, the school. And the reason why that's important, um, to me and others is I'm here as a representative of the Long Meadow Football um, organization, meaning the youth as well as the high school booster club. And there is a possibility that at some point, uh, we may want to use the concession stand on the high school field for youth activities. So if the recommendation is simply for the indoor facilities, meaning the prohibition on the rental of the indoor facilities, I simply ask that it, um, be clear that the proposal relates only to the indoor facilities in order to avoid confusion as it relates to any, um, activities on outdoor school grounds or property.
Thank you, Bill, we appreciate that. Uh, next up, Katie Barker.
Hi, and thank you, uh, my name is Dr. Katie Barker and I live at six-six-three Long Meadow Street, and I would like to, uh, read a prepared statement. We, the undersigned medical professionals respectfully request that you comply with the Long Meadow Board of Health mandate by requiring masks in all Long Meadow public school buildings. Last year, our schools successfully kept our children safe, our staff and families safe, and essentially eliminated the spread of COVID-nineteen within schools. Masking, along with physical distancing, was a cornerstone of this success. The CDC recommends universal masking regardless of vaccination status in K through twelve schools. The American Academy of Pediatrics also recommends universal masking, and the Long Meadow Board of Health requires masks in indoor spaces. We have spent the last eighteen months on the front lines of this pandemic caring for patients and members of our community. We've witnessed the devastating effects of COVID-nineteen, a virus that has claimed the lives of over six hundred thousand people in the U.S., including over four hundred children as of this writing. In addition, we've also witnessed the debilitating effects of social isolation and school closure on childhood and mental health. While vaccinations are one of the most effective mechanisms to mitigate the impact of this disease, our youngest children are not yet eligible for the vaccine. Indoor masking is a highly effective method to reduce the spread of disease. We wear masks every day at work to keep ourselves and our patients and our community safe. And we've sent our children and pediatric patients to school with the confidence that the mask that they wear will do the same. Universal masking is the only way to keep our children safe and ensure that in-person schooling for all students, teachers, and staff can continue. We all look forward to a time when no one will need to wear a mask. But until all people have had the opportunity to be vaccinated and cases decline, we must continue using public health prevention methods. Now is not the time to back away from our most effective tools. We strongly urge you to comply with the Long Meadow Board of Health mandate requiring masking for all individuals in the public schools regardless of vaccination status in accordance with CDC and AAP. This does not simply represent my own opinion. It is the opinion of one hundred and nine physicians, midwives, physician assistants, and advanced nurse practitioners who've signed on to this statement who live in Long Meadow representing the following specialties. General pediatrics, pediatric infectious disease, pediatric allergy and immunology, pediatric oncology, pediatric hospital medicine, pediatric pulmonology, pediatric radiology, pediatric cardiology, pediatric endocrinology, hospital medicine, critical care medicine, anesthesia, emergency medicine, family medicine, internal medicine, cardiology, neurology, gastroenterology, nephrology, medical genetics, OB-GYN, maternal fetal medicine, geriatrics, rheumatology, dermatology, radiology, general surgery, neurosurgery, cardiac surgery, trauma surgery, urology, orthopedic surgery, vascular surgery, and surgical oncology, as well as the pediatric practices located here in Long Meadow, Pioneer Valley Pediatrics and Meadows Pediatrics. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Katie. Uh, next up, I see Jeremy Dugan.
Yeah, uh, good evening, Jeremy Dugan of two-two South Park Avenue. Um, so what a great prepared, uh, speech by Katie Hastings. Uh, hopefully you can all hear me. Um, my, my, uh, my speech obviously not as eloquent or as prepared as hers. Um, but, uh, as I stated last week, you know, um, or last meeting, I, I just continue to be concerned that, um, that we are going down a road where masks will be uh, a topic of discussion for years to come, and, uh, schools will be requiring masks, uh, in perpetuity because, uh, there is this perceived, um, position that any risk of COVID to our children is worth, uh, masking our children. But, um, I want to just go over some numbers here from the latest, uh, COVID stats. I know I'm probably on the losing end of this, but it needs to be part of the record. Uh, juveniles are, continue to be, uh, admitted at less than one in one hundred thousand per capita in Massachusetts. Our children are, uh, our masking is not a safety measure for their own well-being. Our positivity rate is one point six-three percent. We have one of the highest testing rates in the Commonwealth. Our fourteen-day incident rate is eight point three, which is half of the state rate. Uh, in the last report, there are only eighteen active cases in this, in this. as well as the pediatric practices located here in Long Meadow, Pioneer Valley Pediatrics and Meadows Pediatrics. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Katie. Uh, next up, I see Jeremy Dugan.
Yeah, uh, good evening, Jeremy Dugan of two-two South Park Avenue. Um, so what a great prepared, uh, speech by Katie Hastings. Uh, hopefully you can all hear me. Um, my, my, uh, my speech obviously is not as eloquent or as prepared as hers. Um, but, uh, as I stated last week, you know, um, or last meeting, I, I just continue to be concerned that, um, that we are going down a road where masks will be uh, a topic of discussion for years to come, and, uh, schools will be requiring masks, uh, in perpetuity because uh, there is this perceived, um, position that any risk of COVID to our children is worth, uh, masking our children. But, um, I want to just go over some numbers here from the latest, uh, COVID stats. I know I'm probably on the losing end of this, but it needs to be part of the record. Uh, juveniles are, continue to be, uh, admitted at less than one in one hundred thousand per capita in Massachusetts. Our children are, uh, our masking is not a safety measure for their own well-being. Our positivity rate is one point six-three percent. We have one of the highest testing rates in the Commonwealth. Our fourteen-day incident rate is eight point three, which is half of the state rate. Uh, the last report, there are only eighteen active cases in this, in this community. So while the mask mandates have gone away, we have not seen a significant rise in cases in this town. We are not the southeast, we are not the south. Massachusetts and specifically, Long Meadow has engaged in fighting and combating COVID, COVID through vaccinations. Our eligible population is vaccinated eighty-five percent. Of the eligible school-aged children, Long Meadow is at eighty-eight percent vaccinated. Adding masks in middle and high school for the community that has been vaccinated is not an effective public health policy. Encouraging those who have not been vaccinated is the effect of public health policy, which is exactly what Long Meadow has done. Adding masks to these schools specifically is not effective. Again, children continue to not be as affected, even in the Delta variant, from long-term or even severe health outcomes. And so it should be a parent's choice at this time, and it should not be a requirement of the town or the government to mandate masks. I know I'm probably on the losing end of this, um, but I think that the Board of Health mandatory va- mask mandate is in violation of the Massachusetts general law because it is a not, is not a reasonable rule of regulation for the promotion of general health because we are s- s- just not in Long Meadow in a pandemic situation right now. The numbers and the statistics do not support that. And additionally, I think it's an overstep of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees to propose this policy that is being discussed further on and down in the business as well. I think that's out of line as well. I think East Long Meadow is a community that should be modeled, not other communities where they are overreacting. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Uh, it looks like Jess has her hand raised. And Dr. Tapper, uh, did you want to wait until you're, you're up as a, an agenda, or do you want to chime in as a, a resident of Long Meadow? All right, so let's, uh, let's do Dr. Tapper, and then we'll get to Jess.
I, I just wanted to comment on the statistics because I just came off of a Bay State, um, meeting today.
Dr. Tapper, sorry to interrupt. Can you, um, just state your name and?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, sure, Judy Tapper. I live at, um, sixty-seven Windsor Place. Um, I work at Pioneer Valley Pediatrics, and I was invited as, um, a guest of the, um, school committee. Um, I, I was at a meeting this morning with Bay State Medical Center, and the numbers, um, this morning have now doubled, um, at, for the kids that are under eighteen for positives, um, for, um, COVID. They went from four percent to eighteen percent of all kids that are getting tested right now. So even though it was only at four percent last week, it's now up to eight percent. So I know that doesn't, um, break down into the numbers in Long Meadow, but those are the numbers for the kids that are coming around for the community that are getting tested. And I know we're doing a ton of testing in our office. So, I mean, the numbers are accelerating. Um, so i- it's, it's becoming much more of an issue now, and it's probably going to become much more of an issue over the next few weeks as we're surging right now, because we're definitely into a fourth surge right now. So just to maybe, um, correct some of those numbers that were just stated, because they may be, um, not quite as accurate right now. I, I just wanted to state that.
Thank you, Dr. Tapper. Uh, I think we're going to go to Jess next, and I see that Julia and Evy have their hands raised as well. So Jess, you're next.
Hi, um, I don't believe that that does.
Jess, can you, can you give me a favor and state your name and your address, please?
Yep, my name is Jessica Kelly, and my address is, um, thirty-seven South Ave. Um, so just after, I hear you saying that the numbers have increased of kids that are testing positive, but that doesn't tell us that they were hospitalized because of COVID symptoms, or if they were there for something else and asymptomatic and tested incidentally positive for COVID. I know they test the kids no matter what they're in there for. Um, there's been a rise in RSV cases. My son went to the hospital for RSV and was tested. But if that had been positive, I mean, we weren't there because of COVID. He wasn't positive. It, it was separate and distinct from COVID. So I don't think there's enough information. I agree with what Jeremy said. I think that the numbers this mandate by the Board of Health seems like an overreach. And I question, I seriously question if they even have the authority to make such a mandate. Um, because it isn't reasonable, because it's totally disproportionate to the numbers that we're seeing. Because there's been eight deaths, maybe, in the past two weeks in the entire state of Massachusetts due to COVID, maybe. We don't even know if that was the true cause of death because they haven't been reporting accurately. I think that the kids are not at risk. We have seen four hundred kids in the entire country since the pandemic began who died of COVID. Doesn't necessitate a mask mandate, especially in a state and a town that's as highly vaccinated as Long Meadow and Massachusetts. I think that this should be a decision that's up to the parents. I think it's an overreach. I don't think that the school committee has any business trying to dictate health measures like this for the kids, especially with such little evidence that the kids are in danger or in danger of spreading it to their family members or other people in the community who, adults who are at the greatest risk have had the opportunity to be vaccinated. I don't understand why the children have to bear the burden of protecting more vulnerable people. I think this is wrong. I don't think you have the right. I think that this is disrespectful. And I think that it's totally contradictory to the evidence, to all the information that we have.
Thank you, Jess. Uh, Julia, you're up.
Um, my name is Julia Baumwick, and I live at sixty-three Greenacre Avenue. And I would like to make a joint statement with my friend Evy Velania.
Definitely.
Um, I'm a seventh grader at Williams Middle School, and I would feel much more comfortable when everybody is masked because I care about keeping everyone I know safe. And even though I am fully vaccinated, I know I can still catch COVID. And even if it's not severe, I'll still miss a lot of school. And I want to be in class as much as possible because we missed so much last year. Thank you.
You're welcome. Evy, did you want to add to that?
My na- my name is Evy Velania, and I live at sixty-seven Ely Road. I will be a seventh grade student at Williams Middle School. I wanted to speak during today's meeting because I think that all students should wear a mask when we start school next week. Even though I'm vaccinated, I have a younger sister in elementary school who isn't able to get the vaccine yet. With the Delta variant going around, more vaccinated people and more kids are getting sick than before. If someone were to transmit COVID to me at school, I might then transmit it to her. And though I, and although I probably wouldn't get very sick, she might. There is no cause of anxiety larger than knowing that one of your family members could get seriously ill because you caught COVID while in school. Many other students and I wore a mask last year, and it wasn't a big deal. So I would prefer to wear a mask and keep everyone's ga- safe and in school than not wearing a mask and wind up being virtual. Thank you for your time.
Julia and Evy, thank you very much. We appreciate the student perspective. Uh, Nora, you're next.
Okay, these people are wearing masks.
Thank you, Norah Warrenstein, forty-three Barcliff Road. Um, I just wanted to add that I'm aware of additional, additional emails that were sent to the school board that were not reflected in the record at the beginning of this meeting.
So can I just, Nora, can I just jump in, which is sometimes they're received um, after, when we sort of close it off, and we'll report them at the next meeting. Um, so that may be what's going on with, uh, them not being reported. Um, it, does that, does that make sense?
Um, I understand. I don't think that that was the case, though.
Okay.
Um, and in addition, there was a petition that I started together with a group of other parents, um, and I sent to all members of the school board twice. Once on August first, and then a second time, I believe, on August third. And that petition currently has one hundred and twenty-two signatures. Um, so I wanted to add that to the record for this meeting. Um, and happy to resend that if that is helpful, but I assume maybe it won't be necessary after this meeting. Um, and then in addition, just quickly, I'm the parent of a two-year-old and a four-year-old, and my four-year-old is currently scheduled to go into pre-K at Wolf Swamp, uh, very shortly. Um, and so I just wanted to state on behalf of my family and the other families on the petition that we're concerned for the safety of our children who are under the age that is currently covered by the Board of Health's, um, decision. However, we still feel that it's important that this decision be made, preferably to require masks for all who are able to do so, including children, uh, over the age of two, which has typically been the recommendation in our community and by the CDC. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora, and, and apologies if, uh, we messed up, you know, with your correspondence. I know we've been trying to stay on top of it, but we've gotten a lot. So thank you for your patience with that. Um, Jeremy, I see your hand is raised. Normally, we only let people have one bite at the apple. Um, if you have something brief to add, uh, I will allow it, but, um, we try to give people just one shot at it. So if you want to say something brief, that would be great.
I'm so, I'm sorry. I knew you were going to have a discussion about this in the, uh, the next session. I just would like to ask, um, what, under what authority, um, does the Board of Health have to enforce this? And I also asked it to Dr. O'Shea's, uh, under what authority is the superintendent, um, have authority to enforce, uh, such a mandate? Um, specifically now that the governor's state of emergency has expired and DESI has only made a recommendation. So I'd like to know just, uh, kind of what laws or what regulations, uh, have the power, uh, behind them for you, for the school, if they go forward with this and the Board of Health to enforce this. That's it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, next up, it says Luke Hutchins.
Hi, my kids are still talking. Uh, Jess Hutchins, one-twenty-eight Hilltop Road. Can you all he- hear me okay? Thanks. Um, I submitted a letter a little bit last minute. My apologies to the school committee. I hope you received it. I sent it to the, um, Superintendent O'Shea, um, and each individual member of the school committee and the admin team. I, sometimes my email can be a little funky with spam, so I do hope you all received it.
We did, Jess, we did, we did get it. Thank you.
Okay, good. I'm going to read it just for the sake of tonight, so that the community and the, the people who are at the meeting know that a whole lot of families stand behind this statement. That, um, and I'll read it, what it says, that we respectfully request that the Long Meadow School Committee and Superintendent support a mask mandate for the Long Meadow Public Schools in accordance with the Long Meadow Board of Health, CDC, and the American A- Academy of Pediatrics. A mask mandate is necessary for the health and safety of our children, our teachers, staff, administrators, parents, families, and the greater Long Meadow community. Children under twelve have no protection against COVID in school other than masks and social distancing. Moreover, we know that both vaccinated and unvaccinated people can infect others and become ill themselves. In combination with vaccinations, masks are our best defense against the spread of COVID in indoor spaces. The Long Meadow Public Schools has an obligation to educate every student by providing a safe environment for all to attend. The district also has an obligation to provide a safe environment for teachers and staff. Additionally, a mask mandate is truly our best chance to keep our schools open. We ask the Long Meadow Public Schools to be leaders on this issue. Please protect our children, staff, and families. We must do our part as a community to help stop the spread of COVID. This virus is constantly changing, and we must remain vigilant. Thank you for your kind attention to this critical issue, and, and thank you all for your hard work and dedication through these extraordinarily challenging times.
Thank you, Jess. Uh, next up is Mark.
Greetings. Hi, uh, Mark Jackwitz, one-thirty Woodside Drive. Um, I was on that letter, ophthalmologist drawn that letter as well by the group of doctors, uh, from earlier on. I guess I'm looking at this from a bunch of viewpoints. Um, we live in a multi-generational community. I have grandkids who will be starting, um, middle school next week. We're not vaccinated, um, because they're underage. And in, uh, Blueberry Hill, um, I'm over six, I'm be sixty-five. Um, we have a relative who's in Springfield in a nursing home. This is not, there's not a child who's in a vacuum in this community. And the fact that my family in Florida just started elementary school, excuse me, kindergarten and a preschool dancing class, and now my son and daughter-in-law both have COVID, as do their children, even though the kid, their parents were vaccinated. Now, they were carriers. They're having, hopefully, a mild case. The kids have it. We do not know the lifetime effect of COVID on, on people. We don't know what the recurrence is going to be. We don't know what's going to happen comparing chicken pox and shingles. People get diseases years later from something that they had now, and this is a novel virus. I don't think this is, um, an abstract idea. I think public health is an important issue. I think that masks are important, and we have to understand that in a multi-generational community, who's taking care of your kid after school? Who's picking them up and taking them to soccer? If their kid is not masked, you're going to be spreading this thing around like wildfire. The numbers may look low to some people at this point. School hasn't started yet. Give it another couple of weeks. Judy's going to be busy. Thank you.
We know Judy's already busy. Uh, thank you, Mark. Um, next up, it looks like somebody phoning in, and it just says Writing Home.
Hi, sorry about that. Uh, my name is Ann Wheeler. I'm at twenty-nine Ridgeway Circle, and my computer likes to think that I am named Writing Home. I just wanted to step in to offer or maybe respond to a couple of points of view. I'm strongly, strongly, beyond strongly in favor of following CDC, the CDC and other professional organizations' guidelines with regards to requiring a mask mandate. And I wanted to respond to a couple of the points that I've heard throughout the course of the evening. A number of people have pointed out that, um, here in Long Meadow, we have a relatively low infection rate. Um, I pulled up the statistics for Hampton County between eight, uh, August first and August fourteenth. It's true that according to those statistics, Long Meadow had eighteen cases. Springfield, which is our neighbor and just over the border, had six hundred and forty-three cases. And so as much as we would all like to build a very safe bubble here in Long Meadow, all of us are moving in and around western Massachusetts, and having a mask mandate to protect our children feels imperative to me. My kids are seven and three. As soon as they are old enough to be vaccinated, they will be signed up to be vaccinated. I don't know when that is going to be. So every time that I go out in the world, and every time that my kids go out into the world, we wear a mask because, as the previous person said, we're exposed to different generations. My mom had COVID last spring. What happens if one of, if I'm a breakthrough case and my kids get it and she gets it again? Um, she was very lucky to survive. I don't know what would happen a second time. And the last thing I'll say, um, is we talk about, well, only X number of children are hospitalized, or only four hundred kids out of this many have died from COVID. And that sounds like a really, you know, statistically low number, but I don't want that to be my kid, and I don't want that to be the kid. I don't want it to be any kid. And I think we have a chance to protect it from being one of the kids in our community because there's no way that you can say only four hundred children have died. That's four hundred too many when we have a tool that will prevent the spread of COVID and will keep our kids in school. So I just appreciate the folks on the school committee following not sort of individual opinions, but rather the guidelines of all of our country's professional medical organizations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Any other visitor comments? Uh, Bob, do you want to speak now or wait until later in the agenda? Now? Okay, yeah, go for it.
Uh, I'll leave it up to you. If you want me to speak now, I think this would be a, a, a good time. Again, I'm Bob Bejewski, and I am at one-thirty-four Tangowood Drive here in Long Meadow. I am also an invited guest to this meeting as Chair of the Board of Health. Um, just to clarify a couple of comments that have been made, the Board of Health in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has full authority to implement the masking mandates as well as, uh, implementing other restrictive measures regarding the COVID pandemic. We are currently in the fourth wave. It is on the rise, and we are full, fully aware of the science behind it, both locally, regionally, nationally. We've looked at all the data um, that's out there. We are educated people, and we did our due diligence when we decided to discuss this. In the state of Massachusetts, um, the governor has not laid down regulations this year as he has uh, at the beginning of the pandemic, and he has turfed it to the local boards to make the regulations uh, that we have subsequently put in place. With regards to masking within the school system, we have decided that, um, as you know, that masking is the level that we are now currently, uh, mandating. We did not uh, add additional restrictions, uh, such as social distancing, sport restriction, or any of the other types of measures that we could have emplo- uh, employed. Those are measures that we could, uh, implement later if the situation gets, um, out of hand. We are, as mentioned, living in, right now, in a luxury bubble. Long Meadow does not see a whole lot of cases right now. Thank goodness, but we are surrounded by a county that is currently in the highest tier, the red, the red tier, um, of infection. And as we have heard, uh, kids can clearly get the disease, vaccination. Vaccination doesn't prevent you from getting the virus, and we don't want to spread it to those who are unvaccinated, vaccinated, immunocompromised, or in any other way at higher risk. So the board's decision is what the school will, the school board will need to abide by. But how that's implemented, how it's enforced, what additional measures, Nora has just mentioned that she was asking that it go to age two. The superintendent and the school board can push higher recommendations that we have currently implemented, but at this point, we are just implementing and putting in place the mask mandates for the school system for age, for the ages of five and up.
Thanks, Bob. And I know we're going to have time for discussion later on in the agenda, but appreciate you jumping in there. Again, Jess, I know that you already commented, I'll give you a shot at something brief. So go for it.
Hey, yeah, so I just want to know exactly what the like measurable goal is that you have with the mask mandates, what the end goal is, when you would consider lifting the mask mandate, what numbers you're looking for that would be acceptable to you for letting the kids unmasked? And I want to know why the focus is so much on the case numbers and kind of ignoring the fact that the deaths and serious like hospitalizations hasn't been rising proportionally with the case numbers? So I, I just question how relevant the case numbers actually are at this point.
And Jess, I appreciate that. The way the visitor comments work is that you can ask the chair questions, and then the chair can pass them along, and I'm going to hold all of those until we get to our business with guests, because I think those questions are going to come up from the committee. And I know that our guests are eager and willing to answer those questions. So thank you. And, and we will just hold it, hold on, and we will get to that portion of the meeting in just a second.
Okay, can I ask one more question then that you can hold on to?
Sure.
Okay, I want to know what data, what research you guys have done to assure those of us on the other side of this that are not comfortable with the masks? What information do you have that can assure us that it's safe for our kids to be wearing a mask for the duration that you're asking them to do so?
Thank you. And, and again, I'm sure that we will get to that in the upcoming portion of the agenda. Heather, you're up.
Hi, my name is Heather Goldstein. I live at 242 Pine Wood Drive. I just wanted to share, I'm an elementary educator, as I know many of you know, and I just kind of wanted to share that perspective as well, that I'm in full support of a mask mandate for our kids. I have two boys, six and nine, who are going into first grade and fourth grade here. And as I mentioned, I teach third grade over the border in Connecticut, where the governor did make a mask mandate till September 30th at this point. But our kids have had two interrupted school years the last two years. And I think that by having a mask mandate in our public schools, that will allow for the least amount of disruptions for our students. And I think that that's so important, you know, for our kids, hopefully to potentially eliminate the amount of quarantines that they will have to be under and miss ten days of school at periods of time. I think that we need to get our kids into school five days a week as long as possible for as, you know, as much as possible. And I think that having a mask mandate is the best way to allow that to happen, because their education really needs to be a huge priority at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Anyone else? Well, on, on behalf of the committee, I want to thank everybody for their comments tonight. You know, it really is valuable to the committee to hear from all of you, both by email and in person, well, via Zoom in these meetings. So thank you very much. We really appreciate it. And again, I just want to remind everybody that the members of the committee, read all of the emails that folks send in, and we take all of your comments very seriously. And just under the wire, Anna, you get the last word.
Hi, yes, my name is Anna Bicus. I live on Seven Hanover Lane. And I just have a couple of questions also. Just in response to last year, a year and a half, our kids have been masked. I understand that there is not vaccines available, but we had very interrupted years. So what, what's the difference? Like, when will this end? What is the ending point? So what is going to happen when someone does have COVID? And what is the quarantine process, you know, when they are wearing masks again? Also, the Catholic schools, the private schools, I have family that they can afford to send their kids to private schools and they are not masked. They didn't catch any COVID cases. They didn't have any issues with any cases there. I mean, what makes this so different with our children? So I'm on the side with, you know, making a choice. I also have a son that was vaccine injured. So I'm not for vaccines at all, and I know people can hate me and say whatever they want to say, but I have a choice to that as well. So what is going to be so, so different, miraculously different for our children this year as opposed to last year when they were wearing masks every day? Other than the fact that, yes, teachers now have the opportunity to get vaccinated. I totally understand that. My kid was, I have two kids in full swamp, so they were wearing masks all the time, one in kindergarten and one at the preschool program. The preschool program is wonderful, but the kids were wearing their mask and it was sopping wet. How is that acceptable in cleanliness for any type of germs going on? Like, I don't understand the whole theory behind. I just don't. I, I, I just don't understand. But I would like more on that of basically what will be the quarantine process this year when everyone will be masked? What is going to happen to those people that cannot get vaccinated? And those childrens that, children that are vulnerable to vaccines? And are we just going to be segregated? What, what is my choice? What is the school department going to do for me if I can't bring my kid to get vaccinated? Are they going to line me up and pay for a private school for me to go to? What, what is their process for that? That's what I would like to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. All right. I think visitor comments are over, and we're going to move on with our agenda. All right, so our next agenda item is school committee announcements and recognitions. Gianna.
I just wanted to wish everybody good luck. I know that there's a lot of, you know, the masking and all the other challenges before us, but I started back at school last week as a school counselor, and the teacher started back this week. And there's just such a positivity and excitement, and everybody is just looking forward to having the kids back. And I just wanted to wish all of that positivity and good luck to our students and families and educators in Long Meadow as well. It really was a, it was a great feeling today.
Thank you, Gianna. Jamie.
Yep, I just wanted to thank Arlene Miller. She put together a luncheon for all the custodial staff earlier on this week. It was amazing. It was a very good event, and many parts of the community were able to attend and give their thanks, especially in a year which was, you know, an interesting year especially for them. So thank you to her and her team. And I know there was many other people who participated, but I know she spearheaded a lot of it.
Thank you for mentioning that, Jamie. Mary.
As the newest committee member and the liaison to the high school, I went on a tour this week, or last week, of the high school, and met the administration there, and I wanted to publicly thank them for their time. The building looks beautiful. The custodians have done a fabulous job, and everybody is very excited to welcome the kids back soon.
Thank you, Mary. Seeing no other comments, we will move on. All right, business with guests. So first up, reopening of school discussion. I'm going to hand it over to Marty.
Good evening to everybody. Appreciate everyone coming out. And I would echo Kevin's comments earlier that, you know, our inboxes have, have been full, but we read everything and appreciate the comments. And I especially appreciate the civility of the, of the conversation, because this is a challenging issue for sure. So thanks to everybody for coming out and paying attention and giving us some great feedback. So with us tonight, I'd like to thank some folks for taking some time out of their very, very busy schedules to join us. Dr. Bayefsky, who's the Chair of the Board of Health, we heard from earlier. Our consulting physicians are with us this evening. They are Dr. Sally Ginsburg and Dr. Trudy Tapper. And then also with us is Finn McCool, the Director of the Board of Health. So I thank them for coming out. I know the committee will likely have some questions for them, and they certainly have been great sources of information to our administrative team. So I'll just sort of take you through some slides that, at this point, look somewhat familiar to you. And so, starting with the vaccination levels as reported by MassDPH. And so you see the way they bracketed, twelve to fifteen-year-olds and sixteen to nineteen-year-olds. One of the things that we're very interested in doing is drilling deeper into this data to understand the specific vaccination levels of students at each grade at each school. Our nurse leader, Liz Gartman, has been working on that with us, and, and we know that that will be important information for us in the days ahead. Additionally, understanding what the vaccination levels are for our, for our staff as well, I think will be important to our continued decision-making in this area. I'll go through the slides and then, and then welcome in any comments from our, our guests. And, and it's the, the COVID case counts. Again, this is a familiar chart. You'll see some of the numbers are, were referenced by folks during the public comment period. Slightly higher change in the average daily case counts, positivity rate. Long Meadow has declined slightly, but you'll see that Hampden County and the state are, are experiencing things differently. And Hampden County, as Dr. Bayefsky mentioned earlier, is in the highest category of risk per the CDC. So at your last meeting, we, we went through some of the mitigation strategies relating to ventilation, cleaning and disinfecting, hand hygiene. We talked a lot about masking. We spent some time sort of framing the issue and looking at the guidance that was available to us. Plenty has happened since your meeting on August 10th. And there's four areas that I thought would be worth kind of bringing the community up to speed on. I know this is information that generally the community is familiar with, and, and you've been really attentive to the emails, but also the guidance that we've received from various sources. So four areas, we received COVID response protocols from the Department of Education on August 13th. Recently, I issued the staff some sort of preliminary general guidance relating to COVID mitigation. We received some information from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on testing services that DESI is underwriting and sponsoring. And then certainly the mask question has been also evolving since your last meeting. We heard Dr. Bayefsky describe the decision of the Board of Health on August 17th. And then more recently, the, the Commissioner of Education, Jeff Riley, made an announcement that we can talk about momentarily. So I want to hit, if I could, because I think all of these things are sort of interrelated, and, and the decisions we make with regard to one mitigation strategy relate to other mitigation strategies. The decisions that we make with regard to masking might in fact be shaped by our understanding of the COVID response protocols. So again, DESI had provided some guidance on August 13th. The emphasis on symptom monitoring is still critical. There is a sort of a narrower list of symptoms that vaccinated individuals would have to be attentive to. And so, you know, you'll recall last year, we had staff that, for all great reasons, had been sort of self-monitoring and had to excuse themselves from school because they, they met some of the symptom requirements. This year, if you're vaccinated, there's a narrower list of, list of symptoms that vaccinated individuals would have to be attentive to. Couple of things that are, are worth everyone understanding is that the definition of a close contact has remained unchanged since last year, meaning that a close contact is defined as someone who has come in contact with a COVID-positive individual for, within six feet for, for a period of fifteen minutes cumulative, cumulative over a twenty-four-hour period. And so while the definition of a close contact has not changed, the testing and quarantining and isolating requirements for close contacts, our understanding of that has evolved. And so with the COVID response protocols that were released on the 13th, the department has advised us that asymptomatic vaccinated individuals would be exempted from testing and quarantining. So this is guidance that has been reviewed by, by our team and by, by Finn at the, at the Board of Health. And this is guidance that we feel is appropriate for us. So asymptomatic vaccinated individuals, while they might be identified as a close contact, they wouldn't be subject to the quarantining and isolating that perhaps they would have last year. If an individual is, is exposed to a, to a COVID-positive individual while masked and while they're at a distance of greater than three feet, that person would not be subject to testing and quarantining as well. And so, so that three-foot standard has become sort of important, but it's, it's three-foot and masked. The department has advised that the close contacts would be exempting who are, who are found to be in close contact on a, on a bus, would be exempted from quarantining as well. And anyone that has had a COVID diagnosis within the past ninety days would be exempted from quarantining. So those are sort of four categories of individuals that would be exempted from some of the quarantining requirements that I can describe for everyone at this point. So there are a few protocols that we will follow if one is identified as a positive individual or if one is identified as a non-exempt close contact. Positive individuals would be subject to the, sort of the typical quarantining that we saw last year, a period of, of ten days. There's, there's some additional details that go along with that, but for the purposes of tonight, I think we, we can kind of summarize it that way. For non-exempt asymptomatic close contacts, there will this year, if we take advantage of it, be an opportunity to test and stay. So in other words, if one were deemed to be a close contact, and if we have the test and stay program up and running, that individual would not be subject to the quarantine. And so that, that test and stay approach would require that an individual would receive a rapid negative result on each school day within a, it's within a seven-day period. Now, for those not going through that rapid test and stay program, we would be following a protocol that looked similar to the one that we employed last year, which would be you're returning to school on day eight with a negative COVID test day five or later. Or if there's no COVID test at all, then one would return on day eleven. So, you know, we, we hope that, you know, again, go back to, our, our primary goal this year is five days of school in person and as full attendance as possible. And so that, that really is the overarching goal, that we're keeping everybody safe and that everybody has an opportunity to stay with us and be in school, and that students and staff aren't subject to quarantining. And if, and so if we have these mitigation strategies in place, if we can get the test and stay program up and running, that would be helpful to staff and to students and ensure that we can in fact allow asymptomatic close contacts to remain in school. And then finally, the, the last quarantine protocol listed on the slide is for is for an vaccinated or unvaccinated symptomatic individual. So if you're you're symptomatic, you can return to school after you get a negative COVID test and you're fever free and there's some improvement in symptoms. Without testing, you'd be looking at returning to school on day 11. As we've noted in earlier meetings, this year, we do not anticipate that there will be a a remote option. So for students who are absent, their experience would be similar to the absence experience of of students pre COVID, before the pandemic. And so, you know, having that emphasis on creating a healthy school environment, a safe school environment, where people are free, obviously, from exposure to COVID, but they're also free from having to quarantine as a result of being in close contact is really, really critical for us. We know that was disrupted the schooling last year. We know it was a challenge for families and we'd rather not be in that mode this year, if at all possible. Recently, I I issued to the staff, following a a a robust meeting of of some critical stakeholders, just some preliminary safety guidance. And you'll note that we have, we are advocating staff that we maintain wherever possible that that three foot distance standard. Again, if we're able to maintain that as much as possible, it will reduce the chances that staff and students become identified as close contacts. What we've talked about this year is that sort of if there's that instructional necessity, you know, we we don't want a child's educational experience to be compromised as a result of these distancing standards. So if there is a educational experience that requires students to work closely, we'll try and do it for less than 15 minutes. But in some cases, you know, it might be something that's so inherent to the learning process that we're we're going to have to understand that there'll be times where we want to be more flexible with that three foot standard. We recall last year, our our classrooms were were set up with desks facing forward. Good news is that if we're if we have all these other mitigation strategies in place, including masking and and the testing, that we wouldn't have a requirement that desks be facing forward. At lunchtime, we are going to aim for a a six feet of distance between students in the cafeteria. Our principals deja vu all over again, they're working on that. Again, to try to arrange cafeterias to ensure that there is that distance of six feet while kids are eating unmasked. Again, the idea is we don't want students to, obviously, we don't want to see any in school transmission, but we also don't want students to be identified as close contacts as a result of eating close to a COVID positive individual. At Long Meadow High School, we can take a different approach. Students will eat at a less than six foot basis, but, you know, based on the availability of space, the availability of furniture, the high vaccination rates, we're comfortable with with that arrangement in the LHS cafeteria. Visitors, last year, we were we we were restricted in the number of visitors we allowed into school. We feel confident that we can welcome visitors, student teachers and volunteers into our schools. Again, provided we have that they can adhere to the distancing standards, masking and other other mitigation strategies. Snacks will be at six feet and we'll talk about masks shortly. This is a just a single capture of a webinar that we participated in. And this is the the screening and diagnostic testing that the Department of Education is is sponsoring. The middle option, we believe, is will be critical to us encouraging as full attendance as possible. We have already applied to participate in screening and diagnostic testing. Right now, we've applied for all three options here. Because it was a single application, but ultimately, we see test and stay as sort of the critical testing component. It will be our first priority in terms of getting some diagnostic testing up and running. Parents, at some point soon, will receive a letter from the district asking if they would be willing to consent to the screening and diagnostic testing. It will be a single consent for all three forms of testing. But we anticipate that that test and stay again will be our priority focus. Again, if we're able to offer close contacts that test and stay option, then they're able to avoid quarantining safely and they can safely stay with us here in school. That's for staff and for students. Now, onto masking, which is obviously the the reason so many of our guests joined us earlier.
Can I ask you a quick question if you on the last on the last slide about the testing?
Sorry, yeah.
So you said we applied for all three.
Yes.
We have to select one or can we use a a hybrid approach?
No, we can we can we can opt for all three, two of the three or one of the three.
Okay.
And and sorry about that. So yeah, that our 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 priority would be the the test and stay.
Right, the only thing I I think to test and stay is a a great option. The only thing I was thinking was for the first one under symptomatic testing, I wouldn't want to skip for when individuals present presents symptoms while at school. I wouldn't want to skip over that and wait for someone to become a close contact because of that. So I know it's not easy to select which one. So it's good to know that we can use more than one if we choose to.
Sure, and 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 feedback and questions from the committee and from our guests tonight, I think will be will be very helpful for us in terms of where you think are, you know, which which testing we ought to get up and running. I think the consensus was at least to get the test and stay up and running first. And then maybe we could we could look at the the symptomatic testing seemed to be the the next priority for us. So I think we we would agree with you on that, Bronwyn. Jamie had his hand up.
Jamie, go ahead.
Yeah, Marty, can you go back to the previous slide too? Because maybe I missed this last meeting. But so whenever our children go to have lunch, is this new? The six foot K through eight and all this? Or is this something that changed from last time? Because I do not remember that.
So they're they're the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, they've not issued distance requirements at lunchtime. What we're worried about is the potential for students to be exposed and to become close contacts if they're eating at a less than six foot distance. So to start the year, at least, we'd like to start at that six foot standard with the potential to relax it, if we all agree it makes sense. But I think to start the year, our our administrative team felt most comfortable with employing that that six foot standard, K eight at least. Again, recognizing that, you know, at those levels, fewer students are vaccinated, no students are vaccinated below age 12. And we wouldn't, we would want to avoid situations where students have to quarantine at home because of a close contact exposure at lunchtime. So you're right, this is not a a DESI requirement. They've they've left it to local communities to sort of figure this out. But we think that this would be the best strategy to get us going. Outdoor dining will obviously, you know, be a an important option for us as well to make sure that that lunchtime experience is a good one. The kids don't have to sit at lunchtime, they they can sit facing each other. So we we won't, we won't have the sort of the rigid forward facing rows that we've seen in the past.
So, okay, so it's it's new then, because I I don't remember it. That's why I was trying to figure out whether I just completely overlooked that at our last meeting or whether this is something that was new that we're working through.
No, this is really a kind of a a local decision that we had to make because again, DESI has been silent on distancing at lunchtime.
And we feel confident that we're going to be able to keep a kindergartner classroom sitting six foot away from each other at lunchtime.
Yeah, I I mean, obviously, the the younger the kids, the the more likely it is that they're going to need some redirection. But, you know, our teachers had a lot of experience with this this past year where where they were able to and and kids, ultimately, they were they were fantastic. They responded to our expectations. Kindergartners wiggle more, they move more, and sometimes they they fall inside that six foot range that you're trying to create. But that's the target for us.
Yeah, the only reason why I was asking Marty is because now the teachers can have double. Last year, part of the mitigation was to have let half students. Now they're going to have a full classroom that they're going to have to figure. I mean, we're going to have a full school in every school that we're at. So it's a little quite a bit different because you're doubling the amount of students and you don't have a Wednesday off.
Right, so one of the, you know, each school is approaching it somewhat differently. But, you know, you can get a couple of grade levels fed if you're alternating recess and lunch. And so there might be some swapping that we would do to to ensure that we can achieve that six foot distance standard. And Tom Mazza may be able to kind of explain this a little bit better than I. But we expect that the lunch lines will move faster this year, given the the federal loosening of of how lunch is served. So I know Tom can explain that better than I. So we can, I don't know if you want to stick with that for a little while, Jamie, or is that is that helpful?
No, no, good, I was just more thrown off by it, just because everything statistically is exactly the same as last year when we went into this decision from numbers wise and everything is being presented to us. So I just I didn't see that last time, so it kind of caught me off guard, to be honest with you.
It really comes down to the fact that most of the time when they're in the lunchroom, students would be unmasked and it really leaves them vulnerable to being identified as close contacts. It's really what it comes down to. Like, anything that we we talk about tonight, including masking, I think we need to think about it along a continuum. And there might be times where we need to be more restrictive and there might be times where we can be more permissive with with some of the requirements. We'd like to start the year at least with this setup in our lunchrooms, understanding that, you know, let's let's see where this virus takes us over the next few weeks. So to the masking discussion, and and then I'll sit back and 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 listen and answer any questions you might have along with our along with our guests tonight. I think you understand, all of us understand, the the Board of Health ruling. Bielski is here to discuss that further if if necessary. What came as a surprise to us was this past Friday, this is such a rapidly evolving picture. The Commissioner announced that he was going to be seeking authority from his board, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, to mandate masks for all students K through 12, educators and staff through August through October 1st. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has authority over K 12 public schools. It does not have authority over early childhood pre K programs. So that that's the reason it was limited in that case to K 12. The Commissioner announced that they were considering looking at opportunities to lift that mandate if there were places where 80% of students or staff in a building are vaccinated. So it would give a vaccinated person potentially an opportunity to be exempt from that requirement if you hit that threshold. Again, I think we have to wait till tomorrow to see exactly how the Commissioner asks for this authority, how he frames it, and understand what, if any, metrics he ties to his recommendation. So, you know, we're only a few days away from the start of school, but this is still not a completely settled picture. And I think we all have to kind of understand that. The Commissioner did say that, you know, initially, in his view, unvaccinated students and staff would still be required to wear masks. So I'll stop there and then and then I'd love to share some thoughts on where we're coming from administratively on on this question. Okay, Bronwyn had her hand up.
All right, I see that we have some questions from the committee. So I'll start with Bronwyn and then go to Jamie.
Oh, thank you. Marty, I don't know if this question is for you or for the Board of Health. Under the bullet that says opportunity to lift mandate if at least 80% of students and staff in a school building are vaccinated. Based on the number you provided us with before, I think it said one of the age groups, it was high school, was at 78? So if they, if the high school got to 80, how would that work in terms of if DESI said, if they pass these regulations tomorrow? How would that work in terms of who decides if, you know, if they get to that 80%? Would it be the administration or just you or the school committee or the or to go back to the Board of Health?
So, Dr. Bielski, certainly, we'd we'd welcome your thoughts on this critical question. I I my understanding from the Board of Health meeting was that that board had committed to continually reviewing and revisiting this. And I hope that we can continue to do that in partnership, that we can kind of understand the Board of Health's perspective on this and that we have opportunity to talk to the board about, you know, the information direction we're getting from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. But I think the question's really probably best answered by Dr. Bielski, if that's okay.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Yeah, Bob, please.
Yeah, don't mute him.
Okay, good, thank you, sorry, yeah, you muted me. Now, thank you for unmuting me. I like how Marty worded his statements earlier by saying, using the words restrictive and permissive. The Board of Health is not going to commit, at least as far as I can gauge, at this point, any specific absolute metric line that would say, okay, we've reached an 80% vaccination rate, masks are off. We look at all the data, we look at all of the information that we have available to us, what's going on in our community, the surrounding community. We see the ICU numbers going up, we see admissions going up. We 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 put all of that into the discussion. So I would see a tightening of restrictions if we see the numbers going up, a more permissive approach if the situation drastically improves. How often do we look at it? That'll be up to the various committees in town. If the school board said, hey, it looks like things have changed dramatically. We want the Board of Health to relook at it, then we're happy to do so. We will take direction from Chief Dearborn, we'll take direction from Lynn Simmons, we'll take direction from Finn McCool, our director as well. So this is a very fluid state that we're in.
Okay, thank you.
I think we're going to go to Jamie and then we'll go to Suzie and Nicole.
Yep, thanks, I appreciate it. Yeah, mine's more of a general question, I'm not sure who can answer it, maybe it's multitude of people. So I'm I'm looking at this slide and I'm sitting back remembering last year, agonizing over every decision we made. We're in the identical phase of this. If you go back and look at the numbers this exact time last year, they not by be absolutely identical, but they're pretty darn similar and we're hearing all the same things from everybody. And to be honest with you, it's amazing how physicians are divided on this as well. There's a one group that says one thing, one that says the other thing. And honestly, it's 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 very frustrating as a, you know, local town resident that sits here and goes, okay, I'm listening to physicians and they don't even agree en masse. So my question is this, why the Department of Health now? We know why DESI dragged their foot feet and they showed up in April to help us with all these decisions. Where was everybody last year? I don't understand why we're still not the ones that are responsible for this because it seems like DESI and the Board of Health have completely overridden everything that we're responsible for as it relates to the schools. So where was everybody last year is I I don't understand, I really don't. So where was everybody last year is I, I don't understand, I really don't. So I don't know if Marty can answer that, or I don't know, or Finn? I, I mean, nobody gave us any direction last year at this point in time as it relates to a vote in a mandate. Um, and I don't understand why.
Marty, go ahead.
Sure, um, last year, Desi had provided, you know, a significant amount of guidance to us. Uh, they were not as prescriptive, I suppose, um, in August of twenty twenty in the same way that they were prescriptive with, or then they wind up being prescriptive with the a mask mandate. Uh, the, the, the Board of Health last year and um, uh, the director last year, they, they certainly were partners with us. And uh, there wasn't a single plan that we released that we didn't run by uh, public health officials and Chief Dearborn.
Marty, Marty, I, I apologize, I want to stop you, but that, that's exactly what I'm saying. I mean, we already had conversations with Finn last week, and we were working well together for about a year and a half now. And then a week goes by and while a lot of people are making decisions where we were coordinating and having a conversation, we, it feels like now it seems like we're out of the mix because the Board of Health made a decision for the entire town. What's changed? I mean, did something change? Because I don't know anything that did. Um, and I, I just don't think it's right, I don't work this that way. And I would appreciate everybody else not to too. It kind of, it, it upsets me that we can't figure out how to, you know, maybe not step on one another's toes. And I know that she communicated with us, but there weren't votes happening that we weren't a part of and giving our input on and taking their information. So, and I think a lot of people in town are frustrated by that. And I think they're frustrated by the fact that put a line in the sand, you know? Why is Desi putting a line in the sand? And now the Board of Health isn't. They're saying that eighty percent of the students in the high school get vaccinated, you as a town can make that decision. Well, okay, they, that, great, you know, the, Desi and Board of Health are making these decisions for us. So I, I, I don't even know why we're talking about it um, at that point. You know, because it seems like we've been completely, you know, sidetracked. We just completely avoided as part of the conversation that I thought we were a part of.
Uh, Bob, I'd love for you to respond to that.
Yeah, um, Jamie, I, I hear you. Um, things are different this year than last year. We know the virus is more airborne transmitted, and last year we weren't completely convinced on that. Uh, last year, we did not have Delta. Last year, we were not going through a fourth wave. Um, last year, we did not have people who were vaccinated. And last year, we were also under the governor's guidance that he's not giving this year. Things are completely different um, in those regards. So, you know, to say that they're exactly the same is, is not a true statement. We were working under different guidelines last year, this year it's been turned to the local level. And so we are looking at all of these new parameters uh, when we make the decision. We're not looking from the Board of Health, we're not looking at just the school, we're looking at the entire town. We're looking at what's um, what's best for the entire town, in our opinion. Um, so that's where we stand.
So, so as a follow up then, if, if, if it is worse, is what you just said, right? Everything's different, right? So, so my question is, is why aren't we using all the mitigation strategies for those who can't vaccinate? I mean, that, that's where I'm kind of back to where, where I was last year.
For the Board of Health, we said for what's good for the community is masking right now. We don't feel that we, as a Board of Health, need to implement social distancing, stopping sports, everything else. But the school committee is completely at liberty to do that. If you feel the situation is ex- escalating to that point that you want to be in a more restrictive environment, you can, you can clearly exceed the mandates that the Board of Health have put in place.
But I guess, but I, I completely, and I don't want to get into arguments over it, but last year, we were sent by the Board of Health and via Beverly, so I know you didn't do votes, in a direction where it wasn't as bad then. And you told us to do those things. You told us to do those things, you advised us. But now it's worse, yet you're telling us not to do those things. It's very confusing to me.
They're different, and it's going to be different now, and different a month from now, different six months from now.
So, different in, in, in what way where I shouldn't be very nervous about sending my shit in, child into school that they're going to get COVID, like many of the participants jumped in and said.
Your kids may be at risk for COVID for years to come, we don't know. This is not something that's going to go away quickly. We're doing our best to mitigate the circumstances as they exist um, at this time. Pandemics last a long time.
So at, at what point do we look at the unintended consequences of the prescription of putting on a mask and not letting our kids go into school? The unintended consequences, which I know all you physicians know there are, there are things that are happening to our children, whether it's anorexia, bulimia, mental health wellness, any of those things was also have a mortality issue. When do those become an issue for us? And when should we be worrying about that? I'm not a physician, I'm not the one that should be directing this. And that's where I kind of, we made all these decisions last year. And I'm looking back going, oh, my gosh, we were making decisions we should not have been making. Because we're not, we're not physicians, there's no physicians on this board at all. Nor was there any last year. So it's, it feels very disconnected. And I, this is the way a lot in the town feel, even those who want masks on, because they don't, they, they're just saying put masks on because it's, it's easier. Uh, but the directionlessness of this is, is nerve, it's nerve wracking. And I, I, I think we at least owe it to the community to say, hey, you know, everybody go out, let's get to a hundred percent vaccines, we're good. Like, say that to the community.
We won't be good at a hundred percent vaccine, Delta breaks right through. Forty percent, forty to sixty percent of the people in um, other regions that are vaccinated are getting Delta. So don't think that the vaccine is, is the solution to this whole problem.
So I, I want to hear from some other folks, um, and we can continue the discussion. So um, I, I see Dr. Ginsburg has her hand raised, and and then uh, Suzie will get to you. Dr. Ginsburg, you're up.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, um, I, I'm not familiar really with what happened last year. But um, what I would do is basically reiterate what Bob stated, which is there's a lot that we don't know even as physicians. I spend a lot of time reading, looking at the literature, the pre-print articles on the servers that are online. Um, and there's a lot that even the experts in COVID don't know. We're learning a lot. And one of the things that we're learning is that this Delta variant is incredibly transmissible. Five to nine people for every one person that gets COVID. And as Bob stated, there are breakthrough cases. We don't know really, we're starting to think that the asymptomatic people with breakthrough cases are able to transmit, which is why it's really important for everyone to wear a mask. Now, I, I get the frustration, I guess, but I, like I said, I can't compare it to last year. What, what I would say in this case is that every person, every child, particularly those that are not vaccinated, are Petri dishes for new variants. And you don't want that because that may potentially ob- ob- obliterate the, the importance of the vaccine that's been given. And then we really are back to square zero. So you really have to do everything you can in your power. The most powerful thing we have, particularly for children that are not vaccinated, and certainly for those that are, live in homes where there are people who are unvaccinated or are at risk. The only tool we really have for those people is a mask. And it, it may not, there, there's, it, it, it may not be ideal, but it's what we've got at the time. And I think we sort of have to say, do we do this for the community? And say, everyone needs to wear a mask because this is basically all we've got, but the vaccines. But those children under age twelve are highly vulnerable. And the people that live in their house or their family members may be as well. And it takes one trip to the Big Y or one trip to wherever, indoors without a mask, to create a problem. And that's why every place these days, and particularly because of the Board of Health in Long Meadow, has mandated that everyone wears a mask. So until we know more, I don't think that we can say a, I'm not totally in agreement with that eighty percent, but it says opportunity, which doesn't mean it's a definitive decision there either. So I just like, please bear with us, we're really doing our best. I don't know any physicians who don't believe that masking is what we need to do, and it should be universal. And I would say one other thing is that teachers that are com- immunocompromised in any which way, if children are unmasked, you need one case of a child in a class with a teacher that's been within six feet of them for fifteen minutes, and that teacher's going to have to be out as well if their people aren't masked, particularly again in the younger grades.
Thank you, uh, Suzie.
Um, yes, um, taking us on a different um, line of uh, questioning. Marty, can you go back up to the um, slide with the rates of vaccination, just in relation to that eighty percent? Because I think it's important, I, I think it was characterized that the sixteen to nineteen year olds were at seventy eight percent. But I think it's really important to note that most um, college and university policies require students to be vaccinated in order to attend in person. Um, and nineteen years of age is uh, is pretty good indicator, even eighteen years of age, quite frankly, of uh, of vaccination. So is there any um, effort to disaggregate that data so that we know specifically which uh, you know, what population, what percentage of students in the high school have been vaccinated?
Yeah, hu- hundred percent, that, that's a, a task that Nurse Cartman is our nurse leader, and she's been working on that. Uh, they have record to the uh, uh, immunization database. And so trying to drill, drill down uh, school by school, grade level by grade level to understand what the vaccination levels are. So we understand that this is sort of preliminary information, but as we go forward, we most certainly will want to have a, a, a clearer picture at each grade level at each school where kids are eligible. Uh, you're right, you can skim off the eighteen, most of the eighteen year olds, and if not all, the nineteen year olds from that percentage.
Yeah, I think that's just important, differentiating data that, you know, we may not be as close to the eighty percent as we think. And, and you know, obviously, one um, elem- one element of that communication, and I know Kevin has said this at, at meetings, but um, it's important to get vaccinated. You know, as much as like, you know, there are breakthrough cases, the, the vaccination um, at least is, is in some way, shape or form of protection um, in addition to the mask. But I think um, if, if that's any, you know, cause for um, encouraging people, especially our, our high school students who may be unvaccinated to get vaccinated, there, there it is right there. Thank you.
So if I could, well, I, I wanted to share sort of from an administrative perspective where we are as a team on this. But I, I, I don't want to jump the gun because I do see there's some other questions first. So um, I know Bronwyn and Jamie had their hand up.
Can I just ask a follow up question?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Dr. Byaski, um, so I certainly don't want to make the decision again that we made last year in terms of the hybrid and the remote and postponing school and things like that. But one thing I do need your help with is a response tomorrow, that when I have people calling and texting me, asking me if, if things are worse right now, how could you be sending our kids back to school with just masks? When last year you, you know, had us going through this whole process? So if you could just help with a quick response that you feel would be uh, appropriate for that, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, um, we, compared to last year, there's a higher level of vaccination. And um, at this point, we don't feel that a higher level of restrictiveness needs to be put into place, but we may be wrong in two weeks, just sit tight. So um, we're happy to, we, we're continually looking at it. We see the numbers rising, and if they continue to rise, we will be back, so um, I would say that it, it, things are different this year than last year.
So uh, basically like it's a positive approach, but you guys are like eagle eye on the numbers and the rates and things like that. Um, and you guys.
Listen, we're, we're living it. I, I'm down to the emergency department at Bay State, and we're seeing, so we, we, we know it's there, we know it's the younger, the unvaccinated and the kids, and that's what we're looking at, and that's what we're keeping our eye on the ball.
Right. And so I'll just be able to say to people, the, the doctors are on it, the Board of Health is on it, they are living it, and they will keep us posted. Um, and if things take a change for the worse or the better, we'll, we'll hear from them.
And I'm going to throw a challenge out to you that if you on the board feel that we, on the Board of Health, if, if the school committee feels the Board of Health needs to relook at it, we're happy to reconvene and take another look at it.
No, I, I, like I said at the beginning, I don't want to go back to where we were last year. I just want to be able to give a, a good answer to the people that asked me that tomorrow. And I do feel like now, um, you know, having heard from you, I will be able to say exactly that. You know, this experienced physician said this, if you didn't watch it, and just, we'll, you know, take it from there.
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, I'd love to hear from Dr. Tapper. Trying to get you unmuted. I've been hitting that button. Dr. Tapper, is there something you're seeing on your screen? Because we're all hitting, hitting ask to unmute, and you may have to accept that. There we go.
Okay, I'm good?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Um, there are a lot of, um, there are a lot of studies done last year, granted, we didn't have the Delta virus, where kids were in school and they were found that they were much safer in school masks and communities, and their levels were much lower in those schools than they were out in the general public. So masks in communities, in schools definitely helped kids um, not get COVID. Now, they were done before the Delta virus, but assuming that masks are helpful in um, keeping the spread down, there's no reason that that shouldn't work the same way when there's Delta virus out there. So it makes sense that if kids are masked in school, that they will be protected. So just based on the data that was there before, it would make sense that kids are safe in school. And these kids are clearly safer in the communities being in school in masks than they were being out in the community. So I mean, that's a little bit of information that might be helpful. It's very helpful, thank you.
And Dr. Tapper, while we have you unmuted, I just want to throw your way the question about, like, can you address the concerns some community members have about young kids wearing masks all day?
Yep.
And please address that, thank you.
So the Academy of Pediatrics on HealthyChildren.org, actually, if you go to their website, they address that there. And they say that developmentally, it's not a problem, you don't have to worry about carbon monoxide building up. Um, they've done studies with language development, and it has not shown to hinder any of those things in kids. Um, so they've looked at it, and they have really not found any problems at all with kids wearing masks all day. So developmentally, the kids seem to do fine. Clearly, kids that are not around other kids um, and staying home do not do as well. Um, hybrid models are not, did not work well with kids. Um, as we've discussed before, there have been a whole host of mental health issues that are, were coming up last year. In fact, um, the emergency room has been filled at Bay State with kids with eating disorders and depressed, depression. We just had a kid who successfully overdosed this past weekend at the hospital. Um, so it's been horrible with the mental health issues. So I think that we're, it's imperative we get these kids back to school. Um, and masks will help keep these kids safe at school. Um, I think we need to look at it as a public health measure. I know a lot of kids, people don't want their kids to be masked because they feel like their kids won't get that sick from it. Well, thank goodness, most kids don't get that sick from it, as Dr. Jack. As Dr. Jackowitz says, we do not know what the long-term effects of COVID are. We know that they can cause some heart problems. Thank goodness, most kids don't get heart problems from it. I have a fifteen-year-old in the practice that has not been able to taste or smell now for six to eight months. My twenty-six-year-old son hasn't been able to taste or smell for almost a year now, which is not like a really big deal, but it's something you would want to have happen. We do know these kids can pass it along to other immunocompromised people. We, as we've heard, that we want to protect the community. The long-term side effects, we just do not know. We don't know what's gonna happen with this virus. Kids may seem fine, but we don't know what's gonna happen down the line. So that's what I wanted to get out before, while I can still say something. Okay?
Thank you. Suzy, go ahead.
Nicole, have you been wanting to answer the question? Because I will reveal to you.
No, it's okay. You actually asked the same question I was gonna ask about how well situated we are for building by building. And just to add to that a little bit, when we're looking at the building breakdown for vaccination rates, if this becomes a barometer that we choose to look at down the line, I'd also wonder if we have any systems in place to figure out for staff and students how, what our vaccination rates are within each building.
All right, thanks. Dr. Tapper, thank you. I appreciate your insights. I think this is a question for both of you because of, based on what you asked, and also for Dr. O'Shea. We have heard some questions come from the community in particular, and many of the inquiries we've received or just opinions we've received that students who need, especially at the elementary levels, are involved in speech and language services, are struggling to build those speech and language competencies because they're enrolled in speech and language services. And one of the big reasons that they are is they need to be able to see someone actually, you know, creating the sounds with the physical mouth. That's the job of a speech-language pathologist and any teacher who works with learners of that. So you said something about language development, which made me want to ask the question. I had it on my mind. It's just that there are some, I think, legitimate concerns about that, and I hope you can address them, and also, Dr. O'Shea, you can address those as well.
I'm happy to start, if that's okay. So, yeah, I think remembering that our teachers have experience educating kids with masks, and I have so much faith in their ability to find creative solutions and to, you know, work against any adverse effects that we might identify. I think what you described, Suzy, is a real genuine concern. It's something that we've heard. So off the top of my head, I think, you know, some of the things that we'd look at is, we do have clear masks that we could use for students, you know, if it's important to see other shaping sounds. We potentially could tie some of those services in with mask breaks or tie it in with, or have the students work outdoors. And so there's, you know, and I know that our teachers can think very creatively about this in ways that go beyond what I could describe for you right here. But I think that those are the types of things that we'd want to bring those conversations to the surface. We'd want to hear from parents. We'd want to understand the kids' experience, and then really partner with parents to, and find out what we can do differently with the requirements that are in place, as long as masking is, remains a requirement. But, you know, those are the types of things that we're going to have to continually to work out and refine. And there's a lot of strategies already in place. And if I missed anything, Sue or Tom, you know, feel free. But there's some of the things that we talked about.
Dr. Tapper, do you want to jump in on that?
No, I think you have to be creative with that kind of thing, and that's what I've heard. I've heard about clear masks and so on. But for general development, it has not been shown to be a problem.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm gonna go to Mary, and then Jamie, and then Gianna.
I'd like to talk for a minute about the quarantine process and the impact that that will have on students when they're extended absences, when they have extended absences. So if I'm hearing all the guidance correctly, in the event that the test and stay, a student is unable to participate in that for whatever reason, they would potentially miss seven to ten school days or days before they could return to school. And in our school committee packet, I was interested in some of the frequently asked questions that were released by DUCY on August twentieth, that one of the questions says, "Can students who are quarantining due to a COVID-19-related issue participate in remote learning?" And I had thought that that was unequivocally no, but then the guidance goes on to say, "Well, in some instances, maybe." And I do think that it is very significant to have students quarantining for chunks of time. And I think that another thing I was really interested in reading that had to do with the test and stay program is that a student is not eligible to participate that if their exposure to COVID was out of the school building. So surely, we're going to have kids who are exposed in the community and will have to quarantine. So these are just things that if we put, if we put our academic hat on for a second and we think about student learning, how can we accommodate? I would imagine that this would be an LEA issue. This is the first in any of the correspondence I've heard about, you know, this school year, any mention of remote learning. So just want to open that up for thoughts.
So that's a great observation, Mary, that the guidance that came out on Friday did frame remote learning the way you did. Right now, there isn't, our plan to support students who are quarantining would be to rely on some of the strategies we used last year, but not all. So last year, we were able to sort of standardize the delivery of assignments and assessments through Google Classroom. And so that would continue to be a platform to ensure that kids got their assignments on a regular basis. And really, that does go back to our reasons for recommending, and I'd love to spend a little bit more time on it with you tonight, but the reasons that we would, as an administrative team, recommend that we support the Board of Health decision and that we start the year with masking is because without having that clearly defined, without having the remote option in the way that it was last year, we're worried about the potential for students to be identified as close contacts and have to remain at home. The test and stay, the way it is presented now, it's saying that it is for school-based, close contacts. I'd really be interested in understanding if we have to be that limited. In other words, can we offer that test and stay option to students who are exposed outside of school? I don't know the answer to that right now, but if we could expand test and stay to support kids who become close contacts, let's say, in a soccer match outside of school or a dance studio. You know, our goal is to keep kids in school, and if we can leverage that test and stay program to do that, then I'd be all for it.
So I'm just thinking about kids missing significant portions of school. And again, it does seem that DUCY is opening a doorway to potentially having some remote interaction. And it just came out on Friday, and I know it's a couple days later. We've got a lot of other things to talk about, but this might be something that even if it's some remote tutoring or that we just want to put on the radar because we are going to have some kids who miss seven days of school or, you know, ten days of school. And to be able to have only interaction with their educators through a Google platform is really going to be a challenge for those kids. So if we can have some check-ins or, you know, just to put that on the radar and maybe start those conversations at the school levels, I think that would be really important.
For sure. So that was, each Monday morning, our small central office team beats to sort of shape the agenda for a wider administrative team later in the week. And that's item one A is what we're going to do to support remote learners. So we had the same question. I appreciate you bringing that, raising that issue because that's something that the August twentieth guidance that came out, it did, it did, you know, suggest that, you know, that we have some obligation to support the remote learners. We wouldn't want students to feel disconnected. We would want to make that extra effort to keep them engaged somehow, some way with their regular class. But if we're doing our job, you know, and we're masking and we're maintaining the distance standard, and we hope that we won't see the amount of quarantining that we did last year.
And one final thing, when will the test and stay program be up and running?
Again, so this is gonna be one of the things that I wanted to cover. When we talk about our administrative recommendation on this, it really is yet another reason why, I think, to start the year, we ought to really support the Board of Health decision here and that we ought to begin with masking because we need to get that diagnostic program off and running. The webinar was on, what date was it? It was, I'll pull down the slide. We only just finished the application for that diagnostic testing last week, and we're waiting for confirmation from the state. They have, the state has a vendor that they're partnering with that would potentially help staff that diagnostic testing program. So your question, long answer to your question is, we're not sure. It is a heavy lift to get that diagnostic testing program off the ground, but in my view, it's another reason why we ought to start the year with masks just to get our legs under us with that testing program so that we can have that test and stay option in place.
And until we do, we may want to be thinking, and it sounds like it's already on your agenda, to be thinking about what we're going to do with kids who suddenly are out of school sooner rather than later if we don't have that in place yet.
Yeah. Yeah, so if I could, you know, most of our discussion here tonight has been around the medical reasons, and so our discussion is starting to pivot to some practical educational concerns, which are at the forefront as well. You know, when, back in the summer, early part of the summer, I think most of us would have thought that this would be a mask-free year, and that's what we all wanted, and that's what we all hoped for. But so, this is, this is changing rapidly. You know, the guidance is coming at us quickly. And I think we're, you know, I'll trust the agencies that we've heard from that have recommended masking, CDC, AAP, soon-to-be DUCY. We've heard from the Mass Association School Committees. We've heard from the Superintendent's Association. Our own team that we assemble to go through the guidance feels that we ought to start with masking. And there's plenty of, there's plenty of medical reasons that suggests that's a good idea. I've never wanted to, you know, substitute my judgment for the judgment of folks like Dr. Byewski and others, Dr. Tapper, Dr. Ginsberg. We know a lot more about this stuff than I do. But I can say with great confidence that for educational reasons, it makes sense. And I think that's something that we, I really want to make sure is part of the wider conversation here. You know, when, when we start, you know, teachers right now, they're at that point where it's, we call it the Sunday scaries, right? It's really a month of scaries where you're just, you're thinking about getting your classroom up and running. You want to get your routines in place. You want to make clear your expectations to students. And that's what we're in the middle of right now. We're working on student schedules, staff schedules, lunch lines, car lines, all of those things that are really critical to student success. You know, at the end of the day, what does this community ask of us as administrators? They ask that we establish, you know, safe schools where there's clear routines that support learning. And so in my mind, there's a lot of unsettled questions right now. And what I don't want to add into that mix is the question of, you know, some sort of differentiated or optional masking approach right now because we want to get our routines established. We want to get our relationships in place. Let's get the diagnostic testing up and running. Let's learn how to use, let's familiarize kids and teachers and administrators with all the new approaches, slightly different approaches to mitigation. Let's make sure the community that we all understand how this quarantine is going to work this year. There's so many, you know, really practical, student-centered reasons that it makes sense right now for us to begin the year with masks. And so our recommendation to you as an administrative team is that we begin the year with masks, that it be expanded to pre-K students as well. Our pre-K students last year masked up, and they were cooperative and compliant and open to redirection. I have great confidence that our teachers will seek out ways to offset some of the challenges of kids wearing masks all day. We have mask breaks. They won't wear them in recess. They won't have them on at lunch. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna find creative ways to make it manageable for kids. So, you know, our recommendation to you tonight is that we begin the year with the masks, that we expand it to our pre-K students as well. But like last year, we think about that continuum. Last year, we operated along a continuum. There were times where we were more restrictive. There were times where we were more permissive. So let's see where the, let's see where this pandemic brings us. Let's continue to stay in touch with the Board of Health as a group, you know, school committee talking to the Board of Health, myself working with the town officials. Let's continue to have that conversation. And, you know, we all want to find safe ways to not wear masks. If that's, if that's an option for us, let's pursue that and let's seek out the opportunities to do it safely, but with, you know, following the data, following the public health information that's out there. So I guess I would encourage everyone who's split on the medical question to also think about the educational and practical side of this issue. Because for me, right now, the educational and practical reasons are pointing us towards starting the year with masks so we can get our routines in place, establish the relationships that we know make schools work and are good for kids. And you know what? Kids are going to come to school, and there's gonna be joy in our classrooms. And they're gonna learn, and they're gonna feel safe, and they're gonna make friends, and they're gonna connect with their teachers. That will happen. It happened last year. We learned how to normalize this experience. We learned how to work through the challenging parts of wearing masks, and we'll continue to do that. So that's our recommendation. I, you know, we feel strongly about this as an administrative team, that it makes sense, and appreciate all the input that we've gotten from the medical community that really has helped us understand this as well. Thanks for, thanks for listening.
Thank you, Marty. I want to get to more questions from the committee, but just a reminder to the folks from the community, when visitor comments are over, we don't take questions from visitors. However, we would encourage any visitor who wants to send us a question or comment to do so by email. But just a reminder, we do not do that when we're done with visitor comments. I know that Gianna hasn't spoken yet, so I want to give Gianna a chance, and then we'll continue to move around to the rest of the committee members.
Thank you, Kevin. I just wanted to share in, kind of as a follow-up to what Superintendent was saying, just in terms of, you know, I went through all of the emails, and I pulled out sentiments that were pro-choice and sentiments that were, you know, pro-mask. And in making that list, I just wanted to have a balanced, you know, balanced view of the issue before us. And as a parent of a child, of a daughter who has sensory challenges, so, you know, I hear you on the sensory concerns about masking. And as a school counselor who deals with social, emotional, behavioral challenges at the elementary level. Challenges at the elementary level, I also, my whole job is teaching. Kids how to identify emotions, deal with emotions. And so I I do share those concerns. I also work very closely with the school nurse. We have students with hearing impairments. We have students. With underlying conditions. We have a high asthma rate in our school. So I I do, you know, I do share some of those. Some of those concerns. I also know that. The bacteria and the hygiene bills were brought up as concerns. So I would just encourage parents and guardians to please work with. The resources that are available to to your work with your pediatricians regarding the concerns that you may have. The school specialist, the audiologist, the speech and language specialist, the school counselors. I had to adapt my my lesson, social, emotional, again, emotion management, emotion identification, some of those. Those, you know, making connections. Concerns people had about students making connections, especially students that are new to the school. So I worked closely with families and and students in my own school. I would encourage you to do the same. Again, there's school specialists and and specialists, somebody mentioned, you know. Allergens to to pollen when the mask is on the ground. So again, work with your pediatrician and any specialist that they recommend. I just think it needs to be a communication of your concerns. Again, I do share some of them. As a parent and as a school counselor. Who does work with social, emotional, behavioral. So I just I work very closely with my families, our school nurse, our school leadership team. And I would just encourage you to do the same. To please share your concerns and and work together to brainstorm and come up with some. Possible resolutions to your concerns.
Thank you, Gianna. Jamie, go ahead.
Thanks. Just just to echo what Suzie and Marty both said, I couldn't agree more. I guess the big thing in in, you know, with to add into the Board of Health so they kind of know what happened last year as well. Just to kind of fill you in, my my personal feeling is we left a lot of those kids who were of need. Whether it be learning disabilities, social, whatever it may be, which represents a pretty large percentage of our school, Marty, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but. Believe we've been told it's eighteen percent. So one in five of every children. In my opinion, we left behind. We made quick adjustments. Marty's team and then they made amazing adjustments. And we adjusted for that whenever we made our initial decisions. I don't want them being left behind. Them wearing masks is not good. We can all agree. I mean, a kid who has. Need has that visual need to be able to see their teacher or their instructor. You know, they they need to be able to communicate with them, potentially by reading lips or whatever it may be. It is not good for them from an education standpoint. I'm not talking just health. But from a well-being standpoint, a social standpoint, a learning standpoint, to keep them up with school. It's important. I think there's a very large community in this town. If it's one in five children, not all of that community thinks you should have a mask or not. But there is a part of that community that is worried about their children. And I am worried about their children because I don't think this is the best way for them to learn. And then just on a second comment, Kevin, and then I'll stop. And it's more Doc- Dr. Tapper, I appreciate everyone commenting, I really do. But it's more around, you know, what concerned me whenever you were making those comments is there was a lot of stuff you're seeing. Whether it be social, emotional, whether it be suicidal and all of these different things. That I know we're not attributing to masks. It might be attributing because our kids didn't go to school last year. You make up what worked. You can make up what mitigation strategy worked. Was it because we weren't at school until April? Or was it because we wore masks? Was it both? Or was it because our janitorial crew did a great job in keeping the school clean? You know, the reality is we don't know. We don't know what we don't know. There's many studies, German, as well as many others in Europe, that come and are saying everything that you mentioned. That's a concern with a mask and whether they're right or wrong, time will tell. That, you know, all of what you mentioned is directly attributable to a mask. Do I think they're right? I have no idea. I'm not a physician. But there are many of those studies out there pointing to masks and everybody is reading a lot of stuff. And everybody is getting confused and you can obviously hear the frustration of the confusion. Because there's no clarity. Everything's changing day by day and even even physicians disagree. You can go, I mean, it's it's kind of wild. So we're all very confused. They they all disagree. We we got emails from differing physicians, so it's pretty straightforward. So the reality is is we're not going to know until later on, a year from now, two years from now. But there are studies that do show that masks are an issue. So, you know, that's my only other comment around that and it really comes back. To the fact that I'm worried about needy students and we left them behind last year and we adjusted and we fixed it. But we did. So and I'm I'm fine with saying we did and that's okay. Because we adjusted, made a really good, you know, change mid-year, but it took a while to make that change.
I want to let Dr. Tapper respond to that. We got to figure out how to get you unmuted again. Again, I don't know, Dr. Pepper, if there's something you need to hit on your end. We're we're asking to unmute you.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm muted. All right. I guess we can agree to disagree on a lot of what you just said. I mean, there are very few. Mainstream physicians, may I say, who think that masking. Is unhelpful. I mean, Rand Paul is one of. The physicians who feels like it's unhelpful, but he's not necessarily a mainstream physician. So most mainstream physicians feel that masking is helpful for coronavirus. There are a lot of studies in the literature that directly contribute. The isolation that kids have from school. To the mental health issues that are out there. I I don't know of any. Maybe you can enlighten me about ones that. Correlate masking to depression and eating disorders and all the other things that we're seeing. I'm not aware of those and if you have some, please share them with me because I'd find them interesting to read. So. And and everything that I've learned and everything that I've read recently, it's more of the social isolation from the pandemic that's that's causing those things. And we can agree to disagree on a lot of things. And that's fine. But I mean, I I stand by what I said before. And as I said, I think it's going to you're going to be hard pressed to find most. Mainstream physicians that that disagree about the benefit of of masking.
Thank you.
Kevin, if I could just say one thing, I know, and then I'll be done. But I don't even know who Rand Paul is, so I'll go with that. I'm talking long-term physicians that emailed us. That are differing than that. So it is what it is. Not everyone's going to share the same opinion, but they were on the site. I don't even. I wasn't, I'm talking long-term residents who are giving their opinion, who have differing opinion, who are physicians. So a lot of them say mask. Some of them say don't mask. I I don't know. So it is the German Pediatric Association. It was twenty-five thousand children between the ages of K through six. So there's a huge study out there that was done by the German Pediatrics. I don't know if it's real or not. So, you know, I'm assuming, you know, that that's the data. And there's another one out there by the United Kingdom as well. I don't know what's real and what's not. I just was mentioning it going. I feel the same way I felt last year, very unnerved. And I'm at least looking at this as you guys kind of already made the decision for us and that's fine. If I was in person there, I'd be wearing a mask and following the mandate. I just had to watch my children tonight. So but I completely can follow the mandate. I just was kind of confused about the process and kind of how we're working together. As a town that was more on the frustration, but I will follow whatever we all think is the right way to go. I'm not a naysayer. We're not going to show up without a mask. I only don't have a mask because I couldn't come in person. So but that's it and I am good, Kevin.
Thank you, Jamie. I think Bronwyn had a question. Bronwyn, go ahead.
Just a quick question. Marty, I know last year sometimes it was a little later than we had hoped. But will the MIAA give out like? Separate guidance, like. I know we still have time before the fall season is upon us, but I was just wondering how that's going to going to play out.
Yeah, so. Kids are practicing right now. There are no restrictions on outdoor activities. There's there's not, the MIA has not issued another set of guidance. So we'll need to sit down with our athletic director and just talk about, especially, you know, when when games start up. How we're going to handle that and transportation and competition. So right now there's no restriction. On. Outdoor athletes, they don't have to wear masks. Our indoor athletes, we have volleyball in the fall. Those student athletes would be wearing masks while competing.
Okay. And as we do have those discussions moving forward, I mean, I know it takes up a lot of time for all these physicians, but it's super helpful having them here. Obviously, it's a lot to ask for all of them to come to to every meeting. But we do really appreciate their time, so maybe they can rotate or something like that, just so we can get. You know, input from, you know, medical experts. So thank you.
Thank you, Bronwyn. Suzie, please.
Yes, just in response to what Dr. O'Shea just said. When you say there's no restrictions on outdoor athletics. There is a restriction, however, if they use indoor facilities such as locker rooms. I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, thank you. So they will, they do wear masks currently because the current. Board of Health mandate for the town states that they must.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Suzie. Other comments or questions? I guess I just want to make sure that Dr. Tapper, Dr. Ginsberg. Dr. Byewski and Finn, if there's anything that you guys wanted to add that you did not already add. Now would be a great time to do that. And and if you're happy with what you've said, no pressure to say anything more. I just want to make sure you have the opportunity. Excellent.
I'm good.
Thank you. Marty, was there anything else that we wanted to keep our guests around for?
It's, you know, I think. We've exhausted our questions of them and and they've provided some great insights and. I think you're probably at a stage where it's just a matter of. Consideration of the. Of whether or not to extend the. Board of Health mandate to our youngest learners, to our pre-K students. I don't know if there's any any particular insights that our guests have on. On the potential to include our. Pre-K students with the, you know, with a local mask requirement. Otherwise, I think. They've they've had long days, so I think we might be able to spring them.
Dr. Ginsberg looks like she would like to add something. So please.
Hi, you can hear me? Just want to make sure. Okay. So with with kids that are under the age of five, I think it really is dependent on the child themselves. I think you're going to be hard pressed to. Enforce it beyond a certain point. I I have found. In my experience with my own grandchildren who are two and a half, and then there's a six-year-old. Two and a half-year-old wears her mask in school. She goes to a preschool. Many of the children do there as well, but some don't. And I think it it's very dependent on the child, the family situation, how people wear masks and what they're used to. When families wear masks outside, you know, in indoor spaces, whatever, kids see it and they like to have it, they like to wear them. And they tend to want to look like their families. And so they put their masks on. My granddaughter will not go out of the house without a mask. For what it's worth, in her class, there are eight children. Four of them wear masks, four of them do not. But that mitigates the risk to her, which is important to me, certainly, to my family. But, you know, for what it's worth, I think you're going to be hard pressed to say everybody has to wear a mask, but you could, in that case. Strongly recommend them and hope that some people would do it. That's my five cents. It's more anecdotal than anything.
Thank you. Dr. Tapper, go ahead.
Am I unmuted still?
You're good. We can.
I I know a lot of the kids that come to my practice go to preschools that they have to wear masks and those kids really do seem to do really well with it. Which is amazing to me that these kids seem to do so well with it. So I know a lot of the kids are able to do it without a problem.
Thank you. Bronwyn, go ahead.
I was just wondering. Just, you know, reflecting on what Dr. Ginsberg said and Dr. Tapper and Dr. Byewski, the Board of Health did, starting at age five. Was there a specific reason that they did that and they and you guys didn't? Include the younger population? Just because we're going to have to vote on it. So I want to make sure. I fully understand why you didn't include them.
We went with what we felt was the reasonable, we were looking at the K through twelve. Grade. And we thought that that was just the best place to start. Again, the school board is more than welcome to be more restrictive than that, but we were basing it on the comments that you've already heard. As our belief of the best. Age group for this.
Okay, thank you.
Our preschoolers last year had more experience wearing a mask during the school day than any other group remember. They were in. They were in session. Almost a hundred and eighty days. They were in, you know, they were in session right from the get-go. So. And our teachers reported to us that that they were cooperative and could be redirected and, you know, we obviously were. We're more understanding with our our youngest learners in those preschool programs. They need a different type of support and redirection than, let's say, a junior in high school. But those kids had a lot of experience with it last year and our teachers have had a lot of experience with working with preschoolers wearing a mask.
Thank you, Marty. And I guess the the final thing I want to say, I want to echo the comments that others have made. We really appreciate. All of you taking time out of your very busy schedules to come and talk to us and. You know, we know how hard all of you work. We really appreciate the work of the Board of Health. And, you know, our consulting physician. So thank you so much. For all of your insight and input and all of your hard work. We greatly appreciate it and, you know, unfortunately, I agree with Bronwyn, we're probably going to be knocking on your doors again. I think that's just the way it's going to be. And and again, if. Bob, if you would like somebody from the school committee to join you for Board of Health, we would happily do that as well. So definitely a two-way street there. So. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. I I do think now the committee needs to to discuss. The superintendent's recommendation to figure out how best to proceed. But I I do agree if if our visitors want to want to say farewell, I think that's perfectly acceptable. That's excellent. You're free to to stick around, but, you know. You don't have to. So thank you. So does that make sense, Marty, that we should discuss the the recommendation? Does that make sense to the committee?
I'd say there's a couple of different ways you could go with this. Obviously, you could opt to. Leave it at the. At the requirement of Board of Health and not extend it to our preschool students. You could. I had sent to you in your in your meeting packet some potential revisions to your face mask policy. That's another route you could go. Or you could simply vote to extend the. Board of Health mandate to our preschoolers with the understanding that. We probably have some policy language that will need to catch up to it. Policy is tough to develop. With in a public meeting with seven members. Sometimes when you have it in a in a policy subcommittee, it can be a little bit more focused. But I had suggested some revisions in case you wanted to go that route tonight. So. I think any one of those three avenues might make sense and perhaps there's some other paths forward as well. Part of the, one of the things that's unsettled right now is we don't know. With a hundred percent certainty that the Department of Education is going to have a mask mandate K-12. It's very likely. And it's still possible that the EEC, the elementary. Or the early childhood arm of the Department of Education could come out with. Something governing our preschool students too. So we, you know, we don't, we don't know that. So a couple of things that are uncertain still.
Let's go to questions and comments. Bronwyn, go ahead.
Thanks. I think the Board of Health's decision of K through twelve, coupled with the fact that the early childhood. I guess Board of. coupled with the fact that the early childhood, um, I guess, Board of Directors, if that's what they're called, um, for the state, still hasn't um, quote-unquote, ruled on it yet. I don't know if it might be better to wait, um, because if the Board of Health is, is good with five, five, uh, age five, uh, kindergarten, and then the early childhood um, Board of Directors for the state doesn't mandate it. I don't, I mean, it seems like we, if we're following everything else, to me, it seems logical to follow with that as well. So I don't know if waiting is an option to see what early childhood board does. But with the Board of Health giving, you know, the K through twelve, um, I do feel confident in that. And then I guess we could revisit it if early childhood came uh, came up with something else, just a suggestion.
Other comments, questions? Let's do Gianna, then Mary, then Nicole. Gianna, go ahead.
Thanks, Kevin. Superintendent, when does the preschooler, when do the preschoolers start school?
Start with our kindergarteners on the thirty-first, thirty-first of August.
Oh, so they start, okay. In my school, they start later. All right, thank you.
Mary?
Um, I guess I'm just interested that we're having a conversation about pre-K because um, from the Board of Health, it it seemed, you know, K through twelve, universal masking. So I'm just wondering if in the Board of Health meeting, a discussion specific to pre-K came up, or if it was just K through twelve was what, uh, you know, I did watch the Board of Health meeting, um, so I'm not totally sure on that. So I don't, I don't know, I mean, and I know, Bob, I can see you still on the call, but I'm not totally sure about protocol, and if we can go back to questions about that, we can, okay. So Bob, I'm just wondering if, is that over? You know, like, um, when you, when you discussed where you mostly just focused on kids in schools who'll wear masks, or was there any conversation specific to kids in schools who wore masks except for children under five? Cause I feel like we had some overwhelming testimony from medical professionals that were saying universal masking that weren't really differentiating between four and five years old. I'm hearing from Marty that kids in pre-K did really well with it, but I'm also hearing, like Bronwyn, um, I think that is, you know, we're really relying heavily on the Board of Health's recommendations. So I, I guess I just want clarification that you specifically had a conversation saying, no, four-year-olds don't need to mask, or how old are kids in pre-K? Three and four, right? As early as two? Okay.
Um, no, we did not discuss it. We broke down the discussion into several different categories within town into four. The one that we specifically discussed for schools was just the K through twelve. We left off the um, the very young, um, in the discussion, um, knowing that, again, this, the school committee that you guys could actually impose um, higher level of restriction if you needed, but we didn't make any recommendations, knowing that masking was somewhat difficult, we didn't feel that we wanted to uh, dive into that right now.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, Nicole, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I'm looking back at our policy from last year regarding face masks um, and our, um, the suggestions that um, you made along the way there, Marty. Um, and and whether or not we decide to send this over to um, a policy meeting or not, um, I do think that we had, we had good success with, with our masking policy last year. And having that structure already built in and in place, um, seems to me to be sort of the route that I would be uh, most comfortable going if this is a direction that we take, um. And whether or not we, again, like, if we wanna discuss that further at a subcommittee meeting or not, but.
Sue, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak a little more to preschool and masking and just talk about the worry that we all had this time last year about little people wearing masks. And I think they're probably one of the most successful masked groups. Um, the challenge with preschoolers is that they touch each other a lot, they're very close. It's kind of, um, as much as you say, you know, separate yourself, put your arms out. They're, they're really three, four, and five-year-olds who hug each other and walk together in line. And they also, um, it's an integrated preschool, and we have a lot of students with special needs in the school. Some of them have unique, um, autoimmune needs. And uh, we have a lot of teachers and parents in the classrooms who are holding kids' hands, they're changing diapers. So, um, it's a, it's a group that has a lot of opportunity to spread their, their germs around. And so I would like people to think about that for sure when they think about masking the little kids. I know it, it seems like it won't work, but it worked super well last year.
And and if I could just jump in, Sue, can you just speak to um, how segregated are those kids actually from the rest of the elementary school, right? Like, that, I'm nervous that we're gonna get into a position that Marty said we don't wanna get into, which is in a building, we have a differentiated mask policy, because those kids are in the same building, right? So can you speak to that a little bit?
They're, they're at Wolf Swamp, we have three classrooms, um, six half-day programs, and some of the students stay a full day. They actually arrive a little bit after the general population, just for safety reasons, you know, um, and leave a little bit prior to, but during the school day, they're out in the hallways. They, they go to, um, you know, OTPT, those kinds of things. Um, I think they're eating lunch in the classroom primarily now, but they're certainly not, we don't keep them in their classrooms with the door shut, so they are definitely out and about. And super cute.
Suzie, and then Jamie.
I totally agree on the super cute. I also ha, um, I also agree that um, a differentiated policy would, would be in, you know, in sharp contrast to the, the whole um, conversation before, which I think is, was, were really good points about the multi-generational approach to this, correct? I mean, wha- what we have is, you, you will have siblings of those students wearing a mask, and then you basically throw out the mask at the end of the day and go home, and they're not masked, and there could be potential exposure there. Um, so I, I think we have to think about the fact that there's that, um, you know, potential for um, mixing with kids who are masked back at home, um, that could, that could potentially, you know, spread, whether it's asymptomatic or symptomatic. But I think we have to consider that that differentiation then kind of um, puts, potentially puts family, families at risk.
Uh, let's do Jamie and then Nicole. Jamie, go ahead.
You can go first, Nicole. Go ahead, ladies first.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to add on to that, too, that one of the things, when we're looking over the policy about close contacts and time out of school and testing procedures, et cetera, so much of that goes back again and again to if students are masked, then they can remain in the building and use that ready testing. Um, if they're masked and asymptomatic, but even if they're masked and symptomatic, there are occasions where they are out of the building for less time. And and to be realistic, that our, especially our younger populations, having unmasked students might lead to significant disruptions in both learning, in parents' work schedules, in needing to arrange for sudden childcare that goes on for seven to ten days. Um, and these are, I think, our biggest goal right now this year is to ensure the least amount of interruption as possible to this school year. Um, and to ensure that our students are able to be in the building, getting the best education they can get every single day that we're able to have school. Um, so continuing that policy and extending it out through all those grades gives us the best likelihood of making that happen.
Thank you, Nicole. Jamie, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, this, this seems pretty straightforward. We're either gonna follow the Board of Health or we're not. I don't think we should be making alterations to the Board of Health decision if that's what they think is the right direction. Uh, whether anybody agrees with or not, it's, it's, it's okay. So I mean, it, I think we follow it to the letter of the way it's laid out there. There are a group of physicians, there's not any physicians on this board. Um, so they obviously gave their opinion. Um, yeah, my only frustration earlier was really around how we work together. We, last year was a way more cohesive group, and I think we gotta get back to that cause it felt very disconnected this last two weeks from my vantage point. Um, so, but if we're gonna go that route, you know, why are we making changes to something that a bunch of physicians, you know, who have, you know, a lot of experience and that, you know, they're, they're hands-on right now? Why are we changing what they already told us was the logical choice? So, be my position on it.
Jamie, can I just follow up to make sure I understand what you're saying? Are you saying you like the universal masking of the pre-K? Or are you saying not the pre-K? I'm not, I don't understand.
No, they're, the, nope, the, the physician said, don't mask pre-K.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's what they said. I think what Bob said is they didn't discuss it, and then I think Dr. Tapper and Dr. Ginsburg said, please mask the pre-K. I think that's what I heard.
So what I would recommend them doing is, as a board, go back, and if they wanna mask the pre-K, they should make that decision if we're gonna follow this other decision.
But I think we have plenty, we have plenty of information where we can make that decision. I don't think we need to wait. Like last year, we got advice from people and we made a decision.
I'm not making a decision for Long Meadow-Montessori School and every other pre-K in town, they can.
But we have no, we have no impact on them. We're talking about the pre-K at Long Meadow Public School. We're not talking about Montessori, we're not talking about anybody else. We're just talking about the pre-K that's at Wolf Swamp School.
I know. All I'm saying is if they wanna make that decision, they should go back and make it.
But we're only talking about our kids in our program.
Yes, and I am not a physician, neither is anybody else on this board. If they think that's important, they should go back and revisit it, and then we should bring it back up.
But again, we have the power to make that decision if we want to make that decision. And our consulting, our consulting physicians told us that they recommend that we do it.
I got it. So, but they already made the decision on the other side of that for us, on our behalf. So they should go and revisit that as well. I don't see why not. What does that have to, I mean, Ke- Kevin, we, we made all these decisions last year. It's okay that the Board of Health's making those decisions, but we gotta at least make it very clear to the community who's making the decision as to what mitigation strategies we're using, and that's fine.
We're, we're both making decisions, so that's where I'm at. Um.
Okay, I don't see it that way.
Bronwyn, go ahead.
Um, I just wanna point out, uh, that if, if we didn't have a, a mask mandate for the pre-K, those people could still choose, and many probably would choose, to send their students in uh, with a mask. I also just wanna say that, um, I hear what Jamie's saying in terms of if, if we wanna stay consistent, maybe we can, I mean, I don't know why we have to rush. Maybe we can ask the Board of Health, you know, do you mind putting this on your agenda for next time? So you can give us, um, you know, i- if you didn't have a chance to talk about it last time for whatever reason, um, could you do that next time and then get back to us? I don't, I don't know if there's, there's harm in that, um, but.
I, I think the problem is we're running up against school opening and these kids showing up in our school. Am, am I wrong about that, Marty?
Uh, preschool starts on the thirty-first, yeah, next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow.
Bob, do you care to weigh in on, on this suggestion that you guys take this up before um, these kids show up in school next Tuesday?
Um, I'm not sure we're gonna have the opportunity to meet. You know, we don't wanna do violation of the open meeting law and start doing it by email, and I'm not sure everyone's gonna have the opportunity to get back together. Um, I do want to, I hear what you're saying, Jamie, but understand, the state kicked it to the local level. We, as a board, could have just kicked it to the school board. That was the first proposal put out there, that we said we would highly recommend masking, but no one on the board seconded that motion. Therefore, we couldn't completely kick it to Marty and you guys to make all the decisions. So then we went back and discussed K through twelve. We did not discuss the pre-K. Um, again, we can go back and look at it, you've already heard two experts, uh, you know, or two physicians, you know, physician experts would weigh in on it, and we're gonna take their guidance uh, into consideration locally with how it, how it goes. But um, I think that, um, you can look at Town of Easton Meadow, they made the recommendation, highly recommend, and they kicked it to the school board to make it further restrictive. So if you're not willing to take that step and you wanna just kick the can back to us, then we're happy to relook at it whenever we can get back together, and we can talk to Finn to set up another meeting. I can't guarantee how quickly that would occur.
So, so just to be clear, Bob, you're saying that it's highly unlikely that you would have the ability to get the board back together before preschool starts for our kids next week?
Finn can try to ask, but my schedule is, my schedule is personally very tight this week. Um, freer into next week, and I go on vacation next week, so I can obviously meet during my vacation if I'm free, but I, you know, we, we don't necessarily have the ability to meet, as, as you guys wouldn't be able to necessarily meet within three days.
Sure, we, we got it. Thank you. Um, Suzie, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I, I, I think I wanna clarify what's it, what the decision is here. And, and hopefully, this will help us move this in a direction that it needs to go. Well, well, we can argue all night about whose authority it ultimately is. We're faced with a decision as a school committee because our students are coming into the door in a week. And we need to do the very best for them. And I'm gonna just speak from, you know, my orientation as a school leader, and, you know, having spent seventeen years as a, as a school leader. Um, our goal is to get every single child into these buildings next week, period. They need to be in school, they need to have an education that's consistent. We have been told by medical professionals, and, and we have been told by the community, quite frankly, in the past, that we don't have the authority to make decisions around medical issues. So we have, we are taking direction at this point from the Board of Health. As a school leader, we have heard from Dr. O'Shea. His goal will always be to educate the children, but a high priority of educating children is safety. We have been told by medical professionals, by the AAP, by the um, CDC, by our Board of Health, that this is the safest way to return all students to school, and that's our goal. So I would, I would, I would just appreciate if this, if this school committee could get to the point where we make a decision that's sound for the children, instead of arguing who's, who's in the right here. Because really, at the end of the day, we have a week before these children come back to school, and we owe it to them to make the right decision so that they can all experience a very strong education this year, because they've lost it over the last couple of years. We wanna give them the best chance at doing their very best and learning as much as they can at, from day one. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzie. Um, I'll just throw out my thoughts on the topic, which is, I, I think back to, to last year, where we struggled with similar decision. Um, I mean, I'm really happy that we're not discussing whether we want kids to be back in school. They're gonna be back in school. I think the decis- decision now is how to keep them back in school. Um, and I really appreciated last year how we started conservative, and then we figured out how to get more kids back in the school. And we know how hard everybody worked on the committee, the administrators, the teachers, everybody, how hard they worked to make that happen. And to me, it makes a lot of sense to do a similar thing this year, which is to start with everybody wearing masks, figure out how to do it. I think Marty said it very nicely, where it's about establishing the routines, getting people to figure out how to get the, the teachers, the kids, everybody to figure out how to do it with masks on. And then as it becomes possible, because we have really high vaccination rates, because there's really low community spread, as that stuff happens, as we consult with the Board of Health and our physicians, then we can relax the policy. But I, I think what Marty said makes a lot of sense to me, which is to start with everybody masked, it's very clear what has to happen, makes it a lot easier for parents, teachers, kids. And then we can revisit, and we will, we will revisit it at every meeting. Like last year, we revisited who can come back to school at every meeting. We're gonna revisit this at every meeting, that's just the way it's gonna be. So that's my thought, and again, I am just one person, um, but that's what I'm thinking. Anybody else want to share? Um, but that's what I'm thinking. Anybody else want to share? So I, I think we're going to have to have a motion. To do something along these lines. Marty, is, is that, does that make the most sense? And and I know Suzie is generally our on the fly motion creator. And I can see her pen working away right now.
And and like I said, to give you some time to think about this, that your options are to um. Do nothing or to extend the Board of Health requirement to our preschoolers or it's to uh. Make a motion on the mask policy that we had suggested some revisions to. Um, so I think.
Can, and Marty, can I just ask a clarifying question? Cause I, I still know that there's some. Um, question out there about, does the school committee need to vote on the mask policy? And, and again. I, 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 I don't, I, I know that we're getting into the legal issue and I know we've been trying to sort this out. Is it important? That the school committee affirm what the Board of Health said, just so that there's no misunderstanding? Or do you think that that's not important?
I think that could only help if that's was the sentiment of the committee. I don't, I don't, I don't want to. Suppose that that will be the case, but I think anytime. One local board has the option to, the, the ability to reinforce a decision made by another. It can only help bring us together potentially. But again, I, I don't want to. Suppose that that will be the decision of the committee.
I just, I have a question.
Yeah, please.
Um, I wanna just. Knowing that there's this other possible motion that we could approve of revisions to a face mask policy. Um, we, at our June meeting, we suspended and we had the ability to suspend a policy. Um, with, and then thirty days later. Or, and I think it was thirty days later, we had to meet again to decide if that suspension would, would continue. Is that right? Is that how that works? So does it work in the opposite? I guess I'm asking a procedural question. Does it work in the opposite where? We have the ability to, from an emergency standpoint, implement or, you know, um, re-implement. A policy that we've previously suspended.
Diane, any light you can shed on that question?
I have to look, I have to look at the suspension policy. I'll be, let me do that.
Okay.
And I'll add.
Because my question is, if this board reviews this policy this evening. It is that, it, does that follow, you know, the. The school committee's policies that are already in place around suspension or, you know, bringing up a policy for re-implementation or. I don't even know if I'm re-institution of a policy. That's the word I'm looking for. The, the, my second question is, is it feasible, given the timeframe? To actually take this policy back to the policy subcommittee as you suggested might be a pathway. Given the, the timeframe and given the need of faculty and staff to. Kind of be ready to implement the policy.
I'd say it is, and answer to your last question, I thi- I think it is feasible. I think we would want to. Walk out of here tonight with an understanding of. The committee's intention with regard to preschool. And then, um, you know, it's our obligation to administer the policy. That you could subsequently go back and develop some policy language to. You know, direct us on the administration of that, but but absent a policy, we would have an obligation to administer it. So I think if, if it were the intention of the committee to extend it to, um. Extend it to preschool. That would be enough to. Help us get up and running for the beginning of the school year. When we come back to that policy, cause the, the policy gets into things like, you know, uh, mask breaks. Um, permissible exemptions, but that's stuff that. We don't need urgently. I think the only thing we urgently need is just to understand uh your wishes on preschool. I hope that makes sense.
Thank you.
Ronan, go ahead.
Marty, are you talking about the policy, um, like the one with the revisions that we got at like five thirty tonight?
So there was an initial version of it, I sent it over the weekend and I, and I just, uh, had, had, uh, had to clarify the. The outdoor requirement. But yes, that's the, that's the policy that we had suggested some revisions to.
My preference is, I get why we need to do the, the preschool one, but my preference is to. Cause there's so many additional things in there. If it's possible to wait on that one, that would be my preference.
Suzie, go ahead.
I don't have a question, so I'll leave it to. If there's any more questions. Oh, I can make a motion. Okay. I moved that the, uh, I'll make a motion. I moved that the school committee extend the Long Meadow Board of Health's current mask mandate for the Long Meadow Public Schools. To include the district's pre K program.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we will go to a vote. Uh, Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Ronan?
Abstain.
Jamie?
Abstain.
Yes for me. So we have five yeses and two abstentions. Marty, does that give you the direction that you need?
Look into my, my counterpart's central office, but I think that's enough to. Yeah, we can, we can pull it together, a policy subcommittee. If, if the committee has any questions or direction for the policy subcommittee, that, that might be helpful, but we can, we can pull that together as soon as possible.
Nicole, go ahead.
I just wanted to add in, um, I think ideally we would try to have that meeting as soon as possible. So that we could maybe return with a policy recommendation before the next meeting, so that that can be brought up and put together at the policy level.
Any other comments or questions related to the policy subcommittee taking a look at the mask policy? Suzie, go ahead.
And again, I, I'm, maybe I, I might be needing to endorse or something, just forgive me, but, um, so. If for some reason there's a lag in this timeframe where we don't have a policy necessarily in place. Because we've currently suspended the face mask policy. And we're all wearing masks, so technically have we. I, I wanna understand procedurally. Have we reinstituted the previous face mask policy because we have to wear masks now? I think that's a, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I'd say we're. Uh, adhering to the Board of Health order.
Okay.
And you've extended that order.
Right.
To our pre K students. Your face mask policy has some language on sort of the administration of that policy. Um, but. The Board of Health order is enforceable as written.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to be clear, sorry.
And just to, to go a little into the logistics, i- if I look at our calendar. I, I think we are scheduled to have a meeting next week. I don't know if policy has time to get, make that happen before our next meeting. Um, but Marty, does it, is it important that we get that? Before next week? Because then, at least on my calendar, it looks like our next meeting after that would be September fourteenth. Like, is there urgency from your perspective?
So Diane has her hand up, just so you know.
You canceled your meeting for next week.
Okay, so we're not on for the thirty first?
No, your next meeting is September fourteen.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I, I guess I'll come back. Marty, is that, does that timing work?
Yes.
For you, okay. Is there anything else that you need us to do with respect to the mask policy at this point?
No, I think if any individual committee members would like to talk to me individually about that. Um, happy to, happy to talk.
All right, uh, I think we're moving on. So. We're two administrative reports. Marty, you got more for us?
I, you've heard enough from me and I, I'm gonna steal some airtime a little further on in your agenda, so. I, I, I'll say one thing, um, I, I, um, had announced to the, um. To the staff that Bridget Delay will serve as the acting principal of Glenbrook Middle School. Uh, Bridget had been the assistant principal. Um, so Bridget were, were really filled with gratitude that she's willing to step into that role of acting principal at Glenbrook. Uh, Mr. John Wills will serve as the teacher assistant to the principal. Uh, and that is, you know, during the time that Principal Allen is unavailable to us. And so. Um, we'll get that message out to the wider community uh as early as tomorrow. So. Thank you to Bridget uh for stepping into some big shoes at Glenbrook Middle School.
Thank you, Marty. Sue, anything from you?
Uh, no, that's fine.
All right, excellent. Uh, Chair Report, just a, a couple of, of brief things. Uh, number one, um, I, I really appreciate. The debate and the discussion on the committee. I appreciate that we can, you know, disagree in a respectful way. And, uh, and that we're all willing to share our opinions. And I think that's really important. So I continue to appreciate. Everybody's input as we try, try to come up with the right thing to do in these really difficult situations. Um, I also wanna say again what, what Suzie said, but just to say it again. Please get vaccinated. Um, when your, when your turn is up, please, please, please get vaccinated. Again, maybe the. Uh, full approval from the FDA for the Pfizer, um, vaccine today. Helps people who are a little hesitant go and get that Pfizer vaccine, but please, please, please go and get vaccinated. And the final thing I'll say is, um, is it's, it's really exciting, but school is starting, um, and, and, you know. A big shout out to everybody who's getting everything ready, um, and, you know, doing all the hard work. To get ready to welcome all of our kids back. So thank you to everybody for everything they're doing. Uh, to get things ready to go for opening day, which is, is fast approaching. So. That's what I have. Uh, Bronan, please.
Uh, I'm sorry, I, I just thought of this, um. Marty, so, uh, Bridget is gonna take on the acting principal role. Would you say Mr. Wills is gonna be a teacher assistant? Does that mean he's gonna be like the assistant principal or a teacher and the assistant principal?
Uh, appreciate the chance to clarify that. That's a role that is designated in the Unit A contract. So years ago. Uh, there were individuals that served as a teacher assistant to the principal. So, uh, it will mean that Mr. Wills will take on a lot of the sort of day-to-day administrative functions of an assistant principal. But he'll remain in, uh, as a Unit A, a member of Unit A. He'll be a, a non-teaching member of Unit A in order to support the Glenbrook community and support Bridget. And, and I would say that, that Mr. Wills, um, you'll recall, he's our summer school coordinator. And a licensed administrator, so he's, he's, uh, he's really well prepared for, for the, for the task in front of him.
Yeah, definitely. I just wanted to make sure, uh, it wasn't teaching slash assistant, like at the same time.
Yeah, thanks for the chance to clarify that. That definitely needed clarification.
Thanks.
Yeah.
All right, um, we have other reports. Uh, so Dagan, student report.
All right, y'all hear me? All right, this is awesome. I've been sitting here for three hours. This is great. I'm surprised at myself I haven't said anything yet. Um, one, thank you to, um, Bridget and John. Both of them were my teach, were my teachers and my administrators. I know they were doing a great job in the world that they're holding. My heart goes out to Ms. Allen as well, who's my principal. And I understand her stress and her situation. Um, one, the response to the mandate from the L H F student body, it is. Really mixed. My school is a hornet's nest right now. When it comes to the student body, um, coming to it negatively and positively. As most of you know, who have had children go through L H S, we are a big sports school and we are very happy and very thankful that we don't have. Except for the girls play volleyball, of course, that we have no masks outside for sports. As an athlete myself, as a outdoor track and, um, football athlete, I say thank you guys so much for letting me breathe. Believe me, it sucks doing sprints with a mask on. Um, another thing I'd like to talk about would be outside groups coming into the schools. Uh, I'm, I personally am Eagle Scout from Boy Scouts America. I sit on. I am a leader in the Boy Scouts of America from a local to the regional level. And I believe scouting is a most important part of the student development that we have here at Long Meadow Public Schools wide. Um, I came up to the program in PAC two nine five, it's in Wool Swamp Elementary School. And currently my mother is the cub master there, my father is the committee chairman. And any outside group for that matter, whether that be scouting as the Boy Scouts of America, the Girl Scouts of America, or any other outside group. Whatever we can do, and this is going to be a campaign of mine, since I support scouting and all its endeavors and all of especially supporting our. Our youth as it has created moi. I would like to get them back into our schools. As easy as, quick as possible. I know that is going to take policy. I know COVID, COVID precautions, things need to be taken. I completely understand. Um, but scouting needs to continue. Um, I know personally the students of. Not just L H S who are in scouting program as they're older, but, um, younger. Students at the elementary school level, my sister, for example, my brother who's in Glenbrook Middle School. Um, and especially for the kids that actually meet at Wool Swamp, they need this program. It is the cornerstone, I believe, of American youth and has built great men and will create great women. Coming in the future. So whatever actions can be taken to move those groups into the school system. Or into the schools to use their facilities as they were doing before COVID. Um, I think those actions can be taken with swift, swift action. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dagan. Uh, other reports, do we have anything from LPV E C?
Our first meeting is Wednesday.
Excellent. And energy and sustainability, I do not have anything to report. Jamie, anything from Open Space?
Nothing.
Okay. All right, we are on to subcommittee reports, which we have none, so. Moving right along. And now, ongoing business, uh, we're to the issue that Dagan just brought up. Um, facility use requests. So Tom, is this, is this you?
Good evening. Um, so on your agenda, you have a couple of requests that, uh, were discussed at our last meeting. Um, and there was some additional information. I think we wanted to wait and see how the conversation regards regarding. COVID mitigation strategies played out. Um, but I think in that time, we've also kind of. Uh, realized how much the situation is changing and maybe. Moving forward with these two requests are probably not in the school's best interest at this time. I think both considering the, uh, duration of one of the requests. Um, in the communities in which they're serving, there, there are quite a number of participants. Uh, that would be in the buildings during these requests and a number of spaces that they would be using. So I think we feel it might be best at this time to maybe table them and take them up at a later time. I think also on that note, and considering what Dagan had added earlier, maybe some guidance. As to how the committee would wanna consider, uh, future requests, at least in the near future in regards to, uh, indoor space. And if there's an interest to, uh, look at the criteria that we use and, uh, maybe. Uh, consider whether or not it's best to have outside groups and which outside groups we want using the facilities. Best to have outside groups and which outside groups we want using the facilities.
Uh, Suzie, go ahead.
Thank you for clarifying because I was very confused by the public comment and an email we received and Dagan.
Yeah.
Um, because this is the first I'm hearing about, um, that, that people are. Getting the sense that they can't use the facilities at all, so I don't know. I mean, understandably, these two, we had questions about last time because. We need some form of guarantee that they'll follow our district policies around masking. Um, but, you know, from the stand, a- and again, one of them was like just for such a long term that. That would preclude anyone else from using those spaces on the same days, and that was, you know, it's a, it's a very long time that they were asking for those, so. Um. It sounds like you're looking for a direction from the school committee to. Provide some, some guidelines during, uh, during this pandemic. Um, and, and where we are currently around, um, what, what kind of, um, use requests we're. We're comfortable with, um, approving. Okay, thank you. Sorry, I just had to kind of verbalize that because I, like I said, it was, it was confusing to hear the three because I hadn't, I didn't know anything about it.
Tom, keep going.
Yeah, thank you, Suzie, because I think you did summarize that well. I think we've been sharing with committees, uh, requesters, we're unsure how we're gonna proceed. Last year, obviously, uh, we did not approve, we didn't even entertain any requests. So we're telling them there may be a change in terms of the scope of, of building use that we would need some direction from school committee on. So we wanted to bring it forward before we bring forward any requests. That might not fit within the scope or utilization of the building. We'll create additional work for our custodial staff. I mean, I think they've worked really hard this last year trying to keep our buildings. Uh, in a condition for use for staff and students. And with the increase of cases, and again, specifically related to these two requests in front of you. The number of participants and the amount of cleaning that would be required. I would just think it's a, it's a larger burden than I think we want to take on under the circumstances. Without COVID in the picture, I don't think we would have an issue recommending use, but, uh, talking to both administrations. Um, I think they feel like putting a pause on these two requests is the right move.
Dagan, go ahead.
All right, so, um, speaking just to, and now, obviously, I will have, as this seems to be a procedure, I will have the. I'll have PAC two nine five put in a formal request to school committee as I can be their liaison as well. But just to speak to my, to the, to my own program, um, one of the twelve points that's got laws, this guy is clean. And I can tell without, without, with absolute certainty that you guys will have, and we did this years, probably fifteen years. Before I started when I was six in that program. There has never been a problem with cleanliness to do, and obviously with COVID, and there needs to be, I think would be great is to put in some legislation. Having to do with, okay, well. If the school needs to be covered for a COVID liability or the, or the school needs to. You know, have, you know, hey, hey, you guys are gonna follow our rules so that you guys can use our facilities. I'd like, uh, no problem working with you guys on that. And another thing is that. These are all school-aged children. They obviously, they go to this school literally during the day. They will have. No problem working with the, obviously, the mask policy. All the adults or parents in the community, they wa- they literally are probably watching this meeting right now. And I see for this pro- for my program at least, that they will have no problem with any COVID mandate, any cleanliness, and they will be willing to work. On doing, on working on that cleanliness, literally with the custodial staff if needed. So that was just my two cents on the matter.
Thank you. Uh, Jamie, go ahead.
Yeah, my memory is failing me. The, the ones from last week, can you just remind, I know the one was the orchestra with the number of weeks. Um, can you remind us what that is, just so we know, because I, I, I do think we have to bring this back to some sort of policy. Um, and have a really kind of discussion around what is appropriate, what's not appropriate, but I, I completely forget what both of those were.
So the two that are on the agenda tonight for consideration, uh, the Springfield Symphony Youth Orchestra was requesting use of the high school, some. Practice rooms starting in September, running until May, about thirty dates. There are about a hundred and forty participants servicing, um, individuals from Greenshield down to Northern Connecticut. Uh, the second request is from the Chigardi Association of Western Massachusetts, which was for a, a cultural festival in early October. There are about two hundred and fifty participants that they expected, they were looking for use of the gym, cafeteria, kitchen over at Glenbrook.
Good, and was there any Long Meadow residents a part of these programs or the one that's initiating this, or is this outside? Initiated as well as non-Long Meadow residents, just so I understand.
I mean, I do believe they probably have members in both, uh, requests that are residents of Long Meadow. I don't believe the requesters live in Long Meadow.
Okay.
So, Tom, does it make sense that we, a- again, ask the policy subcommittee to, to maybe think about? Some guidance on this, and, and they can discuss that and then bring something forward, maybe in consultation with you since you're the one who, who does all this work. Is that a reasonable way forward?
Sure, that's a reasonable expectation.
Do, do our policy subcommittee friends hear that? Okay. All right. Uh, so, so is everybody comfortable with Tom's recommendation? We table those two policy sub, does some work and comes back to us? Jamie, go ahead.
That's just, that's one question, I, I'm, I was, I agree with Suzie, it kind of felt like this, I didn't know where it came from either. Um, but obviously it's on top, do we have a big backlog right now? Like, how much of a, like, do we need to, like, get moving on this, or is this, uh? I have no idea whether there's a lot of these sitting there right now, but it kind of feels like there might be.
I think things really start picking up when school resumes. A lot of youth organizations have used our facilities in the past. Uh, I would say the spring is probably the heaviest time and things may change from now until then. But dance recitals, uh, like to have their venue reserved far in advance, so they know they have, uh, space. Um, so we do have a handful that we are sitting on, but I do expect we'll receive more in the coming weeks.
And, and just the, the final thought, um, based on the, the visitor comment that we had on this issue, there's nothing that we've done that would prohibit. Anybody from doing, you know, the, the snacks shed, the collecting tickets, any, any of that stuff, am I, am I right?
Yeah, that would be correct. That's, uh, I'm not even sure it would fall under building use rental. I think that's kind of a, a different arrangement that, uh, we'd be talking about.
All right, so Tom, we're good?
Yes.
Excellent. All right, um, we have a possible motion for adjournment. Oh, I'm sorry. I think, yeah, yeah, right. That was brilliant. Sorry, Marty. Sorry, Marty. After nine thirty, after nine thirty. Um, Marty, I apologize.
Yeah, this will only take about forty-five minutes. Um, so, I, I'll, I'll just say, um, uh. We, we are in the process of developing, uh, some district improvement planning goals, and so we had a staff and community survey that we had. Issued, it closed on August thirteenth, we had quite a few responses, they, close to five hundred responses, I think it was. And that survey has given us a, a bit of a roadmap in terms of, uh, what some of our district improvement planning goals might be. I would also say that, uh, the admin team had an opportunity, uh, last week to gather for two days of planning. And we spent some time, uh, going through, uh, a self-assessment around. How well we provide multi-tiered systems of support. And so between the, the survey that we issued, the admin retreat. Some other inputs, including the equity audit that we did, school committee goals, previous year's school improvement planning goals. We feel like we have a lot of inputs that are, uh, pushing us towards some clearer understanding of what our district improvement planning goals might be. Uh, we have, I, I'll just say generally, we think that, and I've mentioned this to the committee before, we think that, that. That MTSS framework, uh, it really provides us with a, a good framework for, uh, improvement, and we feel that if we can align. Resources and PD and staffing models, uh, and budget allocations around that framework, we feel like that's a, that would be a good path forward for us. At our admin retreat time, we also talked a lot about unidiversal design for learning. And we spent a lot of time talking about kind of reimagining what student success looks like, so there's some, uh, our goals are starting to crystallize. I would love the opportunity to, uh, have the admin team sit down with the school committee in some sort of, uh, retreat fashion, maybe a, a, a mini-retreat. We could potentially talk about the fourteenth, not sure what that agenda would look like, but if we have some of the COVID issues in there, you know, decided. We could potentially use the fourteenth, if the committee was interested, I could invite any number of administrators, we could sit down and just kind of go through the, the staff and community survey. Uh, the sort of findings of the admin retreat, I think there's a, there's a lot there that we could collectively, um, look at. In order to help us more clearly define some district goals, so. I'll tell you that I had a PowerPoint for you, but I, I, I'm reading the room, and I said, that's not a good idea right now, so.
Thank you, Marty. Um, comments or questions for Marty? I, I'll say I do like the idea of us, you know, having that, that deeper discussion, um, on the fourteenth, if, if the agenda allows. Any other comments or questions for Marty? All right, so to be continued. Gianna, please.
Yeah, I, I agree, Kevin, thank you, I agree, um, about, I, I love the idea of that retreat, um, it is one of our committee goals anyway, but, um. If, if we set it for the fourteenth, but then, like, I'm just envisioning, like, should we set it for the twenty-eighth instead, just. I'm just thinking, like, we're not really where we need to be with the masking and all that other stuff, and September fourteenth could be a.
The reason I'd like to do it sooner rather than later, if we can, and, and who knows what. COVID will have in store for us in terms of agenda items, but if we can do it sooner rather than later. It's helpful because it'll help us get started on the development of school improvement plans and educator goals. Uh, linked to teacher evaluation, educator evaluation, and, and your goals as a committee and my, my goals as well, so.
So we can think about it for the fourteenth superintendent, and then if something does come up, then we just push it?
Do the best we can, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Suzie.
I think in the past, pre-COVID, when we had retreats, we did, um, have sort of an earlier time for that retreat. And then, um, maybe, you know, pushed our regular business to the regular meeting time, I think. If I'm not mistaken, that was a while ago, so I don't, I don't know if that's, do you recall that, Superintendent?
I do, uh, we, we certainly could poll the, poll your committee and, and poll the admin team and see if there's. A time where, you know, if we have the opportunity to start, when you say start early, what? Obviously, everybody's got professional commitments outside of this, although this is, feels like a full-time job for you sometimes, but. What would be a reasonable time to start, Suzie?
I think we've used to meet like around four, maybe we would flip it and get our school business meeting, school committee meeting business kind of out of the way, and then we would have an, didn't we eat? We eat pizza or something, let's not forget the eating piece, and then, um, one, one way or the other, after the dinner, like a retreat or.
Yeah.
School committee business, one or the other.
And, and I think the reason I was thinking of, given Gianna's point about if there's, you know, really important business to get to. That we'd want to save it for when the public is mostly available rather than, rather than vice versa, so.
Yep.
We can, Diane and I will put some, put some feelers out there to see what might work for everybody. And starting early with some, with some dinner perhaps, and then transitioning to the business of the committee makes sense to me.
I, I agree, Suzie, I think that's worked well in the past, and it would be nice if we could, in some COVID-friendly way, make that happen again.
The longest video before, after, you know, after the last period.
Dagan, you gotta unmute, unmute. It'll definitely be after due good deed. And early for us, we're thinking like, can we do it at four thirty? Anything else on that? All right, so I think we're gonna be optimistic that we'll be able to make that work on the fourteenth, and we'll just be flexible. Okay, now, if I'm reading my agenda correctly, we have gotten to a possible motion for adjournment.
We moved that the school committee adjourned the August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one school committee meeting.
We have a second?
Second.
All right, roll the call vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Brownman?
Yes.
Yes for me, uh, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.